Call to order the April 27th, 2023 Policy Subcommittee Meeting. Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Okay, so on tonight's agenda in the Policy Subcommittee Meeting is to discuss policies KCBA and GCF. The thought of the Policy Subcommittee is to transition from KCBA to GCF with additional language, so add a number four on GCF. So if everyone wants to, does everyone have that in front of them, GCF? Okay. So we'd add a number four on GCF that would read, "All qualified LPS employees will be included in the referrals made to the principals, directors, and/or screening committee for an interview." So that would be the fourth part that we would add to GCF. And the thought of the committee would be to transition off of KCBA and move to GCF. There was some legal issues with this as well. I don't know if Howard, do you want to kind of chime in on why we might, might be wise for us to do this?
Sure. Member Dugan contacted me in, beginning in February, I believe,
Yes.
to review the current policy and review the proposed policy. And I responded to him after a short bit of time in writing that I reviewed both. And it was my recommendation, I believe along with the Mass Association of School Committees, to recommend adopting the revised policy. I believe that it is a little bit more streamlined and I think in terms of positions and recruitment and the need to fill positions, this more streamlined process may benefit the committee in recruiting and attracting candidates. And there was also some issues in terms of the old policy, in terms of whether or not that lined up 1,000% with that reform. I think the current policy gives you, still gives you the protection, especially in the areas where the school committee still retains its authority to hire. You have plenty of leeway in those situations. And it also directs the appropriate administrator to look at, while they have final say in the hiring, to look at community groups and other outside sources as to recommendations. So I believe it's, it's an easier policy to read, it's an easier policy to implement, and I would recommend its adoption.
So I guess if there's any discussion on that? Thank you, Attorney Greenspan. Yes, Ms. Jewels?
Could you please read number four again?
Of course, I would love to. "All qualified LPS employees will be included in the referrals made to the principals, directors, and/or screening committee for an interview." It actually sort of mirrors KCBA. If you look at KCBA, that's a part we've kind of melded from there. I think it is, give me one second. It is a part of KCBA.
Number five.
Number five, thank you, Attorney Greenspan. So number five in KCBA, it kind of mirrors that language. The difference would be it says "all qualified Lynn residents." Ours would be "all qualified Lynn public school employees." But other than that, the wording's the same as that last sentence under number five. So I guess this is open for discussion, if anybody wants to chime in? Yes, Member Magnolia?
I'll just chime in to say that I, I also think that having this new policy is important because one of the goals of the Policy Committee has been to take out policies which are actually procedures. And so much of this was procedural that it's really an important part to just focus on the policy.
Thank you, Member Magnolia. Member Magnolia?
I'd like to move this to the full committee with the inclusion of number four, GCF.
Okay, second. Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Okay, see any other business for the Subcommittee Meeting?
I move to adjourn.
Second. Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Matters of concern in the school committee, the sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation to three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least 18 years of age or enrolled in high school in the Lynn Public Schools District and have been discussing their views with a student government representative. The chair reserves the right to rule the speaker out of order if he or she feels that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or a member of school administration in attendance, that member through the chair may address the individual. The sessions will prompt to commence 15 minutes prior to the start of the regular school committee meeting. Is anyone here to speak at open mic? Anyone for open mic? Last call for open mic. We will close the open mic. All right. Right to call to order the eighth regular meeting of the school committee. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gailey?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Member Peña?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present.
All, could please rise for a salute to the flag? Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No names. All right, first item on the agenda is Marshall Middle School, grade eight students on action civics projects. Welcome. Yeah, yeah.
Take your time.
Yeah, I'll do it, I'll do it.
Bring the mic to you, there you go.
So a little bit of backstory here. Mr. Moss invited myself and actually many of us to come and listen to his class around their civics project. I have to say, Mr. Moss does an incredible job every year with his students around the civics projects. And so tonight, tell everyone your name.
Hello, my name is Ishba Garcia Granados.
Is here to represent the class and the civics project that they have been working on. This is for us to hear what they're doing, and certainly we're not voting on anything, we're not making any decisions on anything, but certainly student voice is very important. I think we all agree to that. And certainly it's a topic that we all care about.
Luke on the table.
On the table.
Yeah, but you'll have to take the little piece and put it in your computer.
I'm representing Mr. Moss's eighth grade E Block Social Studies class at the Marshall Middle School. I'm here to discuss the issue of vaping throughout Lynn public schools. We believe this to be an issue because when people, when people start using it, they could become easily addicted to it, which could result in many negative effects on their health in the long run. We want, we want the Lynn School Committee and Lynn Public Schools Administration to purchase vaping sensors for middle and high school bathrooms throughout Lynn public schools. Based on, based on the suggestion we received from early meetings with Lynn Committee members, Lynn School Committee members a few weeks ago, we would like to use our school as a pilot for vaping sensors as before, before they would be purchased for the rest of the schools. We would also like for LPS leaders to approve a curriculum that teaches about the dangers of vaping and other tobacco products during a time such as advisory. There are many detectors that are sold, while many can be found for as low as $100. We found the Halo Smart Sensors vape detector considered to be the best at $1,295. We think our school needs the best ones. It does more than just monitoring, monitoring air quality, it detects loud noises such as shouting, shouting. This vape detector is a ceiling amount of vape detector that can be placed in bathrooms, rooms, or confined areas. It has 12 sensors that can detect many particles such as vapor from THC oils, cartridges, vape, smoke, and carbon dioxide, monoxide, sorry. The Halo sends the necessary information to school administrators and those handling school safety when negative things are happening. The company that makes the Halo is also aware that individuals tend to break the device. Because of this, the Halo senses tampering and immediately alerts concerned authorities. Mr. Moss spoke with several custodians to estimate the number of bathrooms there are through LPS middle and high schools. Pickering has six, our school TMMs has 20, Breed has eight, Classical has eight, English comes with six, Lynn Tech has 12, and Fecto has eight. We also added an additional 16 to count any we have missed. This, this comes to a total of 84 bathrooms and the price, and they price over a little over $115,000. The Massachusetts sale tax has been accounted for, but we recognize that we, there could be a discount if we purchased this many. Mayor Nicholson met with us and asked us a few questions that we did not have the answers to about the Halo device. Mr. Moss called the manufacturer and got the information. The device is powered over Ethernet and can be run in with hardwire or Wi-Fi internet connection. This is not required, but it is recommended that we subscribe to their online dashboard, which displays all events, current and historical, and empower staff to provide effective response to many monitoring points. It costs about $12.95 per month per device. This would be about $13,000 per year for all devices. Which, which each device has two-year manufacturer warranty. They claim to be the most accurate device on the market, but they say they cannot claim to be 100% accurate. These, they say that many of the false positives happen because the device may not be installed correctly, which is why they recommend using an authorized retailer to put them in the school rather than the staff. We know, we know vapes can contain nicotine and make them addictive. Vapes can contain the same harmful chemicals found in cleaning, cleaning products such as nail polish remover, weed killer, and bug spray. Vape can leave young people with the risk of depression and anxiety. In November 2022, middle and high school students throughout Lynn took the youth health survey. Ms. Jessica Smith, the TMMs social emotional learning clinician, sent the results to us. 2,465 middle and high school students and 200, and students, and 260, 260, 2650 high school students were surveyed. Some of their responses connected to our issue. 20% of high school students and 14%, 14% of middle school students said that they had to, had used an electronic vapor product during their lifetime. Also, 8% of, of high school students and 7% of middle school students said that they had used an electronic vapor product in the last 30 days. This means that just a little under one out of five students have used an electronic vapor at the, at some point in their lives. Also, just one under of every 10 students at LPS have used an electronic vapor in the last 30 days. 80% of high school and 65% of middle school students said that they think most students their age use vaping products, which tells the most, tells most students think that other students their age use a lot of vaping products. This data tells us that most middle and high school students are not using vaping products, however, LPS students think that most other students are using vaping products. This does not affect our goal because almost one out of 10 students using devices is still a huge problem in our opinion. Our class conducted in a survey of the issue of vaping. We surveyed 500 and 509 students and 35 adults through Lynn public schools. Based on, based on the, on the following statement, on scale of zero strongly disagree to 10 strongly agree, "I feel like my students using vaping devices, e-cigarettes, is a major concern at my school." Students on average respond with a 6.85 out of 10. This information tells us that students who took the, the survey agreed to vaping. This is, this is a problem at, at school. The next question reveals 47.4% of students that took the survey know someone who does, who does use these vaping products. This means that almost half of students are friends with those who use vaping products. Only 42% of students did not report seeing others using vaping devices in the bathroom. This info tells us that the majority of students surveyed see others, best, using other students using vaping devices in bathrooms throughout school each week. 57% of students and 80% of adults stated that they think students using vaping devices the most, the most in bathrooms throughout school. Only 25% of the adults surveyed have not caught students with vaping. 49 of students have caught students who are using vaping device or in the bathrooms at school since September 2022. This means that most of adults have, from school have caught students with vaping devices. 25% of students and 11% of adults surveyed said that not putting, putting smart sensors that detect vaping in school bathrooms would not reduce, reduce vaping use at school. This shows that only small percentages of students and adults think that smart sensors will work reducing vaping in school. We think that purchasing vaping sensors will benefit students at our school and schools' district because it will help prevent students from being able to use these products in an area where they're used so frequently. This will hopefully reduce vaping numbers in, in our school. We understand that some people will not be supportive of purchasing vaping, vaping sensors because some might think they're too expensive and some may feel that vaping sensors don't work. As well, advertisers say they do. We respectfully disagree with this idea. We know that bathrooms right now are being known for being a private place for everyone so students know they cannot be caught because they are not monitoring, monitoring everything that goes in the, on the stalls for privacy reasons. We think that sensors work well. It will prevent students from vaping in school for their many hours of day. It will help their health and it won't matter if we pay a lot of money. As we previously stated, what some, we want some kind of vape sensors to be installed in schools such as the Halo we talked about. We want the percentage of vaping to go down in Lynn public schools. Based on the suggestions we received from school committee members, Capola and Castellanos, they suggested using our school as a pilot for vaping sensors before they, they would be purchased for the rest of the schools to make sure they work. Also, we would like LPS leaders to approve a curriculum that teaches the dangers about vaping and other tobacco products such as advisory. Thank you for listening to me and, and letting me present this. Do you have any questions for us for our goal?
Great job, thank you, yeah. Member Peña?
Bienvenido. Thank you, thank you for the presentation. I attended, you know, Mr. Moss's class and, and I attended the presentation with the vaping and I couldn't agree with you anymore. You know, I'm, I'm also, I'm a little concerned with, with the vaping, you know, as you know, it's increasing with our students and stuff, but also with the, the fact that they can use THC cartridges and, and, you know, and, and then I'm, I'm thinking to myself, it'll be a matter of time before they're putting fentanyl in these, in these, they'll find a way to put fentanyl on something, and that's scary, you know? I work with addicts and stuff and 90, about 95% of them, you know, marijuana was a gateway drug for a lot of them, you know, and that's just, you know, something that I just wanted to state, you know? But thank you for the presentation and it's concerning, you know, and I, I appreciate, you know, you know, you stepping up and being a student voice and, and we embrace that, you know, because we, we, you know, we care about your concerns and, and I'm really appreciative of that, thank you, thank you for coming. Oh, one more question. On, on your cost there, you said for 84 devices, right? It's $115,000, but this, have you done any research to see if there's another vendor? Are there any other vendors that we can compare to or, or is this the only device on the market right now?
We have found other vendors, but when we looked them up, they're, the best ones are the Halo detectors, they're the ones with the best stars, they say that it works. We saw videos of other schools using it and it worked completely well, so.
So there are other schools using the Halo?
In other states, but yes.
Another state, sorry, okay, thank you.
Member Castellanos? Member Gailey?
Welcome and thank you for being here tonight. Takes a lot of courage to have to come to these meetings and present. You did a phenomenal job, can I just get a round of applause for that, please? I wish I could do it just as good as that. You, you impressed me when I met you and your teacher as well. We are so grateful to, to be here today to, to listen to you and to really bring student voice to the table. As an elected official, as all of us leaves at the table, it's important to, to get student voice to the table, especially at the decision-making process. Vaping is an issue. We've, you know, this is a recognized crisis that I think it is that we're going through. And to bring a deterrent like this, it really showcases many different challenges and also some of the solutions that are out there. The deterrent to use a Halo device to, you know, monitor and reduce usage is pretty creative, and I think you guys put a lot of work into what that looked like and to vet through the process. The grassroots scenarios that we talked about when we visited you was very impressive because you really hit, you hit it right on the head. Like you really, you struck my heart that day when I heard the issue. And when we make, when we, I was thinking about, I said the pilot piece because I think Donna actually, no, I didn't say it. Member Capola mentioned started off as a pilot program, and I agree, I think that was a phenomenal idea because we talked about processes, right? On how we have a student, you know, what does that look like to come to the table? I know Superintendent Reggio said, you know, tonight we're not going to really make decisions, right? We, but there's a due process, right? And this is part of that process is to get to the table, talk to the people who, who represent the city, because this is the people, see, this is me, I'm just one ambassador of six and many others, and we're here to, to dive through what you're talking about. And with that, with that spiel, I do have some questions, right? My first question is, you know, when we look at deterrence, when we look at the, the Halo product, you know, for vaping, there's some rooted issues, right? Why do we use vaping, right? The question's like, what vaping does, it really masks addiction issues? Like it, it has high quality nicotine in them, and when you use them, kids start to get hooked on it. Students get hooked and they can't let them go. Why are you smoking in the first place, right? Like that's the root of like what we're trying to like stop. The Halo piece, you know, we're going to put these in each bathroom, right? In hopes to reduce that. How are we going to measure the effectiveness of this, like as a pilot? The goals are how are we, how are we going to measure this? Who are we going to target? Who's going to be responsible to manage this? Because we say yes to put these in the schools, we make that investment, how do we plan to, to execute this so it's not just an idea that just dissolves?
Well, when we talked with one of the school committee members, I put the, we, I thought about the idea of hall monitors. We have a lot of hall monitors in the Marshall Middle School. So they have, they get contacted when there's something going on and there's hall monitors, there's two mon, hall monitors near the bathrooms, and we'll get the teachers from each floor and the school administration.
The hall monitors, that's a great, I appreciate that. My next question is, when they actually go off, what does that look like? Like, say we got, we got a live one, like someone's smoking and we pull the vape and that, I heard it's loud, so like, how does that impact the overall student experience? Yeah, go ahead.
So I know, by the way, I wanted to say you've done such an incredible job at this. This is, yeah. I'm so proud of you right now. So it can be both silent and if you really want to make it an obnoxious sound, you certainly have that ability to do so. So it could be something that it could just go directly to the administrators where they get like the, you know, it could be a text message or it could be some other sort of contact, or they could just, yeah, it could be like the, the really loud beeping. If we might not want to do the loud beeping.
Yeah, loud beeping, right.
Well, and then the fire, usually, so we'll have a whole sequence of events, and maybe students might see that, maybe it might create a deterrent, but I find this to be a very worthy initiative due to the impact it's having and the current practice. Can you talk about what we're doing now? Like what's happening now in your schools? With, so if you're vaping or kids are vaping, what does that look like?
Um, right now, I haven't heard much, but you know, like every week there's a student vaping and got caught in the classroom, in the bathroom, in the cafeteria or gymnasium under the bleachers. So there's always, like every week, once or twice that student is getting vape, vaping, caught vaping.
That question might have been, I have a, I'm kind of, I'm aiming towards like disciplinary, maybe Superintendent Reggio. Could you kind of enlighten, like, so, like, so if we have kids who are kind of double-edged sword, like kids are vaping, right? Maybe they might be highly addicted to these vaping products. What are we doing to, you know, are we going to have a system when we do locate a student, right? Because what's going to happen is we have an alert system, right? Are we going to hit them with a consequence or are we going to try to get them some resources to help them? Right, which way do we want to go with it?
So currently, in our discipline code, there is a tobacco and vaping use policy and that there is discipline that's attached to that. We try very hard at our schools to educate because to your point, it's a, it's, we got to get to the root of why. So although there would be discipline, there also would be education and clinical support, you know, referral to Lynn Community Health or referral to our clinicians to have conversations around the danger and how we can help them avoid use. I want to also commend you, it's not easy to, I know what it feels like to sit here, so there it feels the same. You've done a very nice job and you're bringing forward a problem that we are all aware of and that needs to be addressed. We are having conversations about this. We have a health advisory committee board who meets and talks, vaping has been a topic for a while. We are looking at, and actually tonight there is a presentation from our health administrator, and we are looking at health curriculum, and I am sure vaping is part of that. And I would add also, we are, and I would say because it was prompted by your presentation, I think, I mean, I think we've all been talking about vaping, but hearing it from the students brings it to another place. We are actively investigating options. And so, you know, but to Mr. Castellanos's point, it, there's a process we have to go through. You have to look at multiple options, you have to look at cost, you have to look at what's the most effective and efficient way, but bringing it to light the way you, you and your class have, it's getting something done, so thank you.
Member Gailey?
What an excellent job you did. Back in 2019, I was working at a high school that's not in Lynn, and I had quite a few hockey players, and they thought it was really cool to just go to the boys' room, then they come back and they would be like, they have them in their bra, you know, like girls have them in their bra straps, and us older people have no clue what it is. Vaping is so addictive and it's so destructive. At that health advisory committee, I made a mention that what people should do on the high school level is when they go to college, to do some research on it and then turn around and sue the Juul Company so, so they're responsible, just like Camel Joe was responsible for making students think that it was really cool to do something like a Juul. And that's what's actually happening that's causing our addiction. Because once they get you to take something, then Because once they get you to take something, then you are addicted, so then you can't stop. This, I cannot tell you the faces I got from these boys on this hockey team when I said, oh, I just saw a program, they have vape detectives, and they're all going, what? There's vape detectives? They got so nervous that they were going to get caught because if you are practicing that kind of behavior, the consequences is not just your health issue, but also you won't be able to play on the team. So they got really nervous. That's how important this issue is that you brought forward to this school committee. And you're bringing, like, top of the line. And Mrs. Capola, remember, Castellanos said, let's put in a pilot. I would also like to talk to the policy committee and maybe get some policy addressing vaping because I think it's more dangerous than cigarettes because you can't see it unless you detect it. And I just can't commend you enough. You have a wonderful job on this presentation. And you are definitely informing the public of an issue that we need to address. So thank you very much. Excellent job.
Member Castellanos.
What do you want to be when you grow up? Got to ask, I put you on the spot.
Um, right now, my, the dream I want to pursue in career is probably a lawyer.
I know a couple.
Well, thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you for tonight. Thank you for the presentation you gave to the, to the class that I was able to see. You guys have done phenomenal job with the research, with the presentation. And then I also thank you for following up there. And I can, I, I spend a lot of time, I'm a lawyer, I spend a lot of time teaching law students, and there is no harder skill, and it's something that lawyers always struggle with, that to be able to, someone asks you a question, you say, I don't know, but I'll look it up. And you guys did that, and then you, and then you looked it up and followed up. And I can tell you, that's invaluable and something that people struggle with for their entire career. So I'm really impressed. Thank you so much for the presentation. And, you know, we'll continue to work on this and review it. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So before we move on to the next presentation, I was eager to dive into this, and so I skipped over the minutes.
Make a motion to accept the seventh regular meeting on April 13, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. I also want to make sure that we recognize our student school committee member, Madison Brown. Welcome back, Madison.
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. All right, curriculum updates.
Yes, so I would welcome our fine arts music assistant director, Julie Carroll. And we have Colleen Peterson, who's our assistant director of health and PE.
Yeah, so the, just, just as an announcement, the open mic portion of the meeting already concluded. If that's where you're, yeah, yeah.
There's some issues that needs to be addressed about Lynn English High School.
Okay. If, we would really appreciate if you let, leave your contact information. We'll definitely follow up.
Because like, there's some serious stuff going on there that, like, people have no idea, like sexual assault and everything.
Okay, yeah, please, if you wouldn't mind, we'll follow up.
I really hope so because a lot of people tell me they don't follow up and they don't, you know.
Thank you.
Good evening. That is a hard act to follow, I have to say. I was so impressed with that student and the teacher's work, too. Excellent. So we are from the curriculum department. We have a few presentations for you this evening. We would like to present on the art department, theater, dance, music, athletics, PE and health. Our colleague, Dr. Klobansky, prepared a wonderful presentation, but unfortunately, she's feeling a little under the weather tonight. She did manage to record her presentation, which I'm very impressed by, and would like to share that, too.
Good evening, Mayor Nicholson, school committee and all of Lynn schools. My apologies for not being there in person this evening. I'm not feeling very well, but I will definitely try to go through all the slides and give some information about my department. I am born and raised in Lynn and a graduate of Lynn English. And first, I would just like to share a snapshot of art, theater and dance projects I'm working on in my role. I supervise all the art, theater and dance programs. I evaluate all our teachers in art, theater and dance for pre-K to 12, as well as our two art therapists. And I also plan the arts curriculum instruction for our teaching staff. In 2019, DESI released an updated arts curriculum based on Common Core, and we've been working on providing culturally sustaining pedagogy in alignment with the new curriculum frameworks. I additionally plan and facilitate our monthly PD meetings with all our amazing art, theater and dance staff. And with elementary, I lead our PLC meetings across the district. As you can see from this slide, I direct the all-city art exhibit with all the schools and coordinate partnerships and performances. And in my role, I help manage the budgets for art, theater and dance and help with staffing in our department. Here's an outline showing the contents of this presentation. First, I will share information about professional learning for the arts. Second, I will review the visual art department updates. And third, there will be updates for theater and dance. For our art department, we work with the Art of Education University. They have worked with us to help provide supplemental art lessons, assessments and online PD opportunities. And they've also worked closely with our teachers in providing lessons and resources for Hispanic Heritage and Black History Months. And we've improved our approach to teaching art appreciation in all classrooms. We're also exploring an online resource for the theater teachers and students called Digital Theater Plus. They provide over 700 online full-recorded productions that support and supplement our mass curriculum and can be used directly with students. And that's just something we're looking into to help offer that support. We offer monthly art, theater and dance professional development where we go over our curriculum needs, our students' performances and exhibits, and do book studies on topics like race and art education, as well as inclusion in the theater. We also receive museum PD and work with our partners at the Addison Gallery of American Art, the Boston MFA, PBD Essex Museum and the Lynn Museum, Lynn Arts. I just want to provide a brief overview of our programs in Lynn. Our elementary teachers are itinerant and have the challenging task of teaching across buildings and classes. Elementary students take art once per week. And in the middle schools, students have art daily for about one quarter. The high schools' art is offered as an elective for grades nine through 12, and those are mostly semester-long classes. With the exception of portfolio art and AP art, which are full-year courses. At Frederick Douglass, art is also offered as a college drawing course that is run by each semester. We have two art therapists, and they are both full-time. Claire Donley is providing art therapy at Facto Leary Junior High School and focusing on secondary-level students. And Megan Lyons, who is new this year, is providing art therapy in some of our elementary schools, such as Fallon, Hood and Teams, which is at Tech, and they're both doing a fabulous job. We have a total of 30 visual art staff on our team. Since I've been in this role, we've added eight positions in visual art to meet our population demands. And you can see the breakdown there further. Recently, we celebrated Youth Art Month in March. It's actually always in March. We reopened our in-person all-city art exhibit and collaborated with our partners at Lynn Museum, Lynn Arts. Opening night was a huge success, and it was wonderful to see so many excellent works displayed in our standards-based format. We estimated having over 1,500 visitors on opening night, which was March 22. And I know some of you were there, and it was wonderful to see you there, and thank you for attending. And here are some photos from our opening night for the all-city art exhibit. We had an interactive art table for children to enjoy. And all art teachers were visible and greeting their students and families. It was really terrific to see so many smiling faces and have such a positive turnout. I also want to recognize Lynn English High School student Hedi Acosta, who's in grade 12. Ms. Brown's student, Hedi, worked very hard. And you can see here, this is her artwork that she did during Hispanic Heritage Month at the start of the school year. We selected Hedi's artwork to be the theme of our all-city invitation and flyers to the whole school community. I would like to recognize this artwork titled "The Restraint" by classical high school artist Amy Matul, who's in grade 12. Amy recently was awarded the Gold Key Award in Massachusetts by Scholastic Art. Also, a thank you and congratulations to our art teacher, Ms. Sutton, for guiding her students and doing a fabulous job. More awards and recognitions for our Lynn students' fine arts can be seen on the Massachusetts Art Education Association website as well. Additionally, the Massachusetts Art Education Association highlighted some of the students' work in their Youth Art Month exhibit from Hood Elementary, Classical and Lynn English. Congratulations to our dedicated art educators who worked with their students, Ms. Kivitt, Ms. Sutton and Ms. Brown. And also congratulations to the principal for your, principals for your support. And the presentation of art for these schools can also be found on the Massachusetts Art Education Association website if you'd like to see the artwork. Additionally, during Youth Art Month, we had Montserrat College of Art, which hosted the Sixth Congressional District High School Art Competition. Students from Lynn Classical and Lynn English received awards. Honorable mention awards were from Lynn Classical, Amy Matul, with artwork titled "The Only Way Out," and Amika Shackelwood, artwork titled Narcissism. And Lynn English, Lydia Robles, artwork titled "Moon in the Water." Best of School Award went to Lynn English High School student Christina Tran, artwork titled "Meow." And second prize went to Lynn Classical High School student Dejanae Kelly, artwork titled "Colored." So congratulations to all students recognized. In the next few slides, I am providing updates for theater and dance. I will share the overall structure, upcoming performance, events with dates, and other advanced opportunities for drama through our partnership with METG, the Massachusetts Education Theater Guild. In total, we have five theater teachers in the secondary schools and one dance teacher at Classical High School. To further break down, English and Classical each have one theater teacher. Thurgood Marshall, Breed and Pickering each have one theater teacher as well. And since I've been in this role, we've added three theater teachers and one dance teacher in order to provide a more comprehensive fine arts program in Lynn. These are our drama performances for this school year. The highlighted shows are upcoming. At Classical, students will be performing Shrek the Musical on May 18 through the 20 at 6:30 PM. At English, students will perform the Lynn English High School Talent Show on May 6 at 7 PM. And then for middle schools, Marshall Middle School will perform the Cinderella, oh, they already performed Cinderella Chronicles earlier this year on February 16. Breed Middle School will be performing a show titled "The Story Store" on May 5 and May 6 at 3 PM. And Pickering is performing Annie Junior Show on June 7 and 8 at 6 PM. And I'll also be sharing all these out by email through the superintendent's office and Mary Jewels. Here are some photos from our late fall shows at English and Classical. English performed "Our Town" in Mr. Lopez's Drama Club. And Classical performed "Treasure Island" in Mr. Ailshay's Drama Club, and they look great. This slide involves Massachusetts Education Theater Guild Advanced Opportunities and Recognizations for our students. All our secondary schools have memberships to METG. I would like to recognize the students from Lynn English and Classical who were recognized at this year's festival, which was March 4th and 5th at Lynn English. We had Mr. Lopez's students, Kayden Everett Green, got the Excellence in Acting recognition. Evan Rodriguez got costume design, and Kayla Lopez also got costume design. At Lynn Classical High School, Mr. Ailshay's students, Wilbur Casey in the 10th grade, got Excellence in Acting. And Zee Cologne in the 9th grade got Excellence in Acting. And Riley Slanley in the 10th grade got Stage Manager's Award. The upcoming middle school festival dates are May 6 and May 7. And I want to wish all the students good luck and break a leg. As you can see here, we have slides for dance. We have new flooring installed in the new dance studio at Lynn Classical. It looks really great. The students' program is thriving there. And you can see the Black History Month performances on the far left. Kids got costumes and did a really great job performing this year and multiple times. And you can see here, they're also rehearsing over on the right. And that's our, some of our team over at the all-city art exhibit this year. Thank you all for your continued support of our arts programs and for our students especially, and for attending our events, and we look forward to seeing you at more. Thank you.
Wonderful. I'm glad that Dr. Klobansky had the opportunity to share her information about her department. We will move on to the music department next. My name is Julie Carroll. I am the Assistant Director of Curriculum for Music here. I've been in this position for four years. Prior to that, I was an elementary music teacher here in Lynn for 15 years. So I believe I had your daughter at this school.
You did, yes.
Similarly to what you saw with Dr. Klobansky, this is an overview of the many projects we put out in the music department. In my role, I supervise our 38 music staff, and I help guide our standards-based teaching, our school performances and community partnerships, among many other important things that we do. Tonight, I plan to focus on our professional learning, our music in the classroom, our all-city music program, advanced opportunities that we have for student musicians, and our music performances. So here in Lynn, we have many opportunities for professional learning for our music staff. This is something unique in this district, and I'm very proud of it. We have a monthly music PD for our full music staff. It's an excellent chance to collaborate and work on projects, tune our teaching. We also have a weekly PLC for our elementary music teachers, our music therapists, our itinerant band teachers and our itinerant- our itinerant band teachers, and our itinerant orchestra teachers. This is something that has only occurred in the last few years. It's been a wonderful addition. Often, there's only one or two music teachers in a school, and this is a very unique opportunity to collaborate and work with your peers. The full music department met on our in-service days this year, and this allowed us to create larger projects like our March Music in Our School Month informances, which I will talk about in a little bit. Next, I would like to move on to music in the classroom. We have music courses for all of our grades here, pre-K through grade 12. At the elementary level, there are three possible music classes that a student can have in a week. There's a weekly general music class for all students, pre-K through grade 5 throughout the year, and those students participate in school assemblies and performances with the work that they do. When a child gets to 4th or 5th grade, they have additional opportunities such as band instrument lessons, orchestra instrument lessons, and a school chorus. This allows them to work on some more challenging music, collaborate with their peers, and participate in extra performances for our school community. At the middle school, general music is a part of the regular course rotation for our students, and we have further additional opportunities beyond that. The instrumental students can continue with their weekly small group or individual lessons. We add a few other instrument options, again, for our more advanced students who would like a bigger challenge to grow and to fill out the sound of their ensemble. We have a weekly in-school band ensemble rehearsal and a weekly in-school orchestra ensemble rehearsal. And there's also a school choir at the middle schools. At the high school, we continue to offer our weekly instrument lessons, and it allows us to differentiate to each child's need. We have some very high-achieving music students, and some of them can take even up to two lessons a week with it. Very proud of the work that they do. We also offer band classes within the school, both chorus and concert choir classes within the school, piano classes at multiple levels of advancement, and music theory. We've recently added a second full-time music therapist to our staff, which has been such a wonderful addition to our school community. The teachers travel around to different schools. We have a strong base at Fecto Leary and also at Fallon School. We see the coach programs at Hood School. We work with the teams program at Tech and a few of the other secondary and elementary schools. The music therapists are also available to help with the general music classes when it becomes apparent that support would be appreciated for the diverse learners. In recent years, we have grown to a full staff of 38 music educators, adding many new positions. This includes the new music program at LVTI Discovery. We have a wonderful 8th-grade general music teacher who's doing terrific work both during the school day and also after school in ensembles that include the high school students. We have added additional itinerant instrumental teachers so that more students have more opportunities to learn their lessons. And we can also, as I mentioned before, support the differentiated needs that each of our students have. We've added that additional music therapist, and also additional elementary general music teachers so that we can fulfill everything that we need for our students. They all have the opportunity to have a music lesson during the week. I'd like to move on to our after-school All-City program. This program has a very long tradition here in Lynn. This is a yearbook photo from, I believe, 1953 of the Lynn Public School Band. They are highly visible in the city at all sorts of events, such as the tree lighting. You see the marching band at football games. We have the unique experience of our marching band plays for all of our high school football teams. So we're at Manning every Friday and Saturday consistently all through the fall. It is also a very unique opportunity I haven't seen many places besides Lynn, where we have the students from across the city meet together after school and collaborate with their peers, no matter which school they go to, to create music, build relationships, have a deeper learning. And they really seem to take deep pride in their groups, with taking care of their uniforms, fundraising for their events and their needs. It's really, truly a wonderful program. We have four of these ensembles at the high school level. That would be the marching band, the jazz band, the concert band, and the orchestra. They rehearse several times during the week, all year, and the marching band rehearses in the summer as well. And again, those are the groups you probably see the most throughout the year when you go to an event in Lynn. Here's a nice picture of the marching band returning to the field at Manning, and our All-City Orchestra preparing for their winter concert. We also offer middle school ensembles. We have a concert band and a jazz band for 7th and 8th grade that we bus the students to a central location for once or twice a month, starting in November. We also have advanced groups, the Orchestra and the World Strings. These two advanced ensembles not only allow more challenging pieces of music and repertoire, but the music selection is much more diverse, and the students have a little bit of say in the music that is selected. So get to play some more interesting pieces of music. Furthermore, we have an elementary All-City Ensemble. This is quite a feat to see. We have about 750 students in the elementary instrumental music program. 4th and 5th graders can take lessons throughout the year. And remember, they're beginners, so they're just learning how to put their instrument together, how to continue to read the music, get a sound, and sometimes it's a very interesting sound in the beginning. I know I played clarinet in the 4th grade and my parents had to sit through that. But they grow, they develop. That's how they learn. They get to be with wonderful teaching staff that are dedicated to that position and their peers. They may participate in their school concerts, but at the end of the year, we have an All-City Elementary Concert. And this year will be the first time in several years that it will be in-person due to COVID. We are gearing up for it on June 6th, 7th, and 8th. Now, again, because of the number of students in that performance, we have split it up into three nights, so six schools per night. And you'll be getting an invitation in a little bit. We're also pleased to participate in advanced opportunities for our music students. We have a strong relationship with MMEA, the Massachusetts Music Educator Association. And the MMEA produces several festivals, both regionally to our district and also statewide. The middle school and high school music students spend extra time participating and practicing for their audition with their teachers after school, or maybe we sneak in an extra lesson. And we bus them to the audition where they get to be adjudicated by a professional musician on their instrument and receive individualized feedback, celebrating all of their wins and giving them some tips to move forward. We've had quite a bit of success in recent years with students being accepted for both the district ensembles and also the all-state ensembles, and I'm very proud of the work that we do. This is probably where we're most visible, is our music performances. I am sure that you have seen us all kinds of locations throughout the city. This is from the Central Square Tree Lighting with the band playing in the street that thankfully Lynn Police closed down. And there from the marching band. They also participate in their school-based concerts and have their own concerts for All-City. We do all sorts of Veterans Day and Memorial Day assemblies and parades. We do a lot of dedications of parks, bridges, streets, whenever something is named after someone. We are usually there present. We've performed at a few different AFT conferences in recent years. We have another one coming up this Saturday. Classical High School Chorus is going to perform there. Marching Band Caroling is very well-known in the city and highly requested for several weekends in December. Graduation ceremonies. I could probably stand here for 45 minutes and list all the different performances. This is what we do, and we are proud of it, and we are happy to do it. This year, we piloted a new program of informances. Now, informances are a more contemporary approach to music education. Traditional performances in music education are very focused on the end product. You rehearse, and you rehearse, and you rehearse, and you have as perfect performance as you can at the end. In an informant, you engage the audience in your learning process. You have the students discuss their experience, perhaps demonstrate some of the warm-ups that they do, maybe get a little audience interaction, have people try it out. So, in March, which was Music in Our Schools Month, we took many of our middle school and high school ensembles around to different schools in the city to perform for those students. And it was really a wonderful opportunity. The student performers had a say in the music that was performed, and the audience reacted very well. We heard a lot of positive feedback after. This is the All-City Marching Band performing in the schoolyard at Connery School. We had some very nice weather that day, so the whole neighborhood got to hear the performance. This is the All-City High School Jazz Band at Ford School. This is the Classical High School String Ensemble at the Drewett School. And this is a video of the Lynn English High School Concert Choir, and I'm going to have-- This is going to have to hold off for a minute. At Lynn Woods, you are probably aware that they have a wonderful American Sign Language program. So their ASL interpreters reached out to us ahead of time to ask if there was any information that we wanted interpreted. And I was so thrilled with the interpreters. They took our song lyrics and interpreted them for the audience so that everyone could participate. Much more inclusive performance, and I'd like to show you a little bit of that. It definitely enhanced the performance even further. I was very proud of that group. To close out my presentation, I'd like to make you aware of some dates. Again, you will be getting a formal invitation, probably through email. We have our secondary All-City concerts coming up at the end of May. These are for middle school and high school students. We have on Tuesday, May 23rd, is the orchestra concert. And on Thursday, May 25th, will be the band concert. That does include the jazz band and the other select groups, too. That will be at Lynn English High School. And here are those elementary concerts that I mentioned with the huge crowd of shiny, happy children ready to play. It is quite a feat. I know in my time as an elementary general music teacher, I was so thrilled to go help and see my students achieve there. And I hope that you can come to at least one of those. So, those are the schools on the nights that are coming. But again, you will get this information.
I have to say, it's very impressive to go to these and see these young children playing instruments together that really didn't play together. It's quite amazing to watch.
Definitely. So I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to tell you about my department and to share a little bit about what we're learning. I'm going to turn it over to the Phys Ed and Health Department now.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Let me first introduce myself. I'm Colleen Peterson.
Colleen, pull the microphone.
Good evening, everyone. First, let me introduce myself. I'm Colleen Peterson, Assistant Director of Curriculum for PE and Health. I wanted to start by giving you some background information on some of my responsibilities, a lot of projects going on in this department. We have professional development, which I'm going to talk to you about tonight, standard-based lesson design, hiring of PE health staff. We did the Youth Risk Behavior Survey this year, which the vaping data, I think she used some of that. We do athletic director monthly meetings with our three high schools, which I'm going to give them some-- They have some information for you tonight and some additional projects that I'm involved in. So here's an overview of what I'm going to talk about tonight. I'm going to give you an athletics update and also a PE and health update. So first, for athletics, we got a lot of new uniforms this year. We have new uniforms for hockey, Lynn Jets. We have Lynn English and Lynn Classical tennis, which were very cute. And Lynn Jets lacrosse. We also had uniforms for boys, our new boys volleyball team, track and field, cross-country, Thurgood Marshall's cheerleading, and Pickering basketball team. So I'm going to give you some highlights from our recent high school seasons. We're calling this a sports flash. Josh Moore came up with that. Thank you very much. Lynn English, Lynn English Boys Basketball Team won the GBL Championship. Alvin Abreu was Coach of the Year for Boys Basketball. Warren Keel and Tyrese Mello received the MVP Award for the GBL. Both Boys and Girls Basketball made the MIA Tournament. And baseball is 4-2. They're off to a great start. For Lynn Classical, Girls Basketball won the GBL Championship and were 20-0, so they had an undefeated season, which is amazing. Ava Thurman and Akaya Brown are both going to Suffolk Universities to play basketball together. Tom Soria won his 200th game as a coach at Lynn Classical. The baseball team is 6-1, and softball is 3-2. Lynn Tech, Lynn Tech Boys Basketball Team won the CAC Championship and the Vocational School Championship. Corey Bingham was awarded Coach of the Year for Boys Basketball. Both Boys and Girls Basketball made the MIA Tournament. Indora Girls Track were CAC Champions. James Runner was Coach of the Year for Track. And Lynn Tech Swim won the City Meet. The Lynn English and Lynn Classical combined unified basketball team were undefeated, and they were also GBL champs. All three high schools have brand-new varsity boys volleyball teams, athletic directors. Newton, Devon, and Graciel all agree that the sport is wildly popular.
Good to hear.
Moving on to the Playball Partnership for Middle School Sports. Their mission is to get more feet on the field. This is a new intramural sports program that we're piloting just this month through the Playball Foundation. Playball funds school districts in Massachusetts cities to create and run middle school sports leagues in order to leverage the power of sports and to create and deepen school engagement for kids. It's not designed to replace any of our existing sports or intramurals. The purpose is to create more opportunities because there's only so many spots on those teams, and we have so many kids that need activities after school and middle school. So the purpose is to create more opportunities for students to participate in competitive sports and build positive relationships with coaches and classmates. All of the coaches that are involved in this program are from the schools that they teach at, so the kids go to. Middle school kids were surveyed on what sports they wanted to add for this program. So these were the Breed survey results. They were given Fall, Winter, Spring. And soccer was across the board for all three seasons. So that's why we started our pilot with soccer. Pickering Soccer was also top dog. And Thurgood Marshall as well. So we have three soccer teams per school, 15 students per team. That means we have 135 additional feet on the field, which is great. There's a picture of our Breed Black and Gray Team. One of the coaches on the black team is actually the head coach, Eric Moreno, for Lynn Classical Soccer, Boys Soccer Team. This is Thurgood Marshall's Playball Teams. This is a quote from Alyssa Phila. "Coaches are happy to report that teams are building relationships and enjoying playing soccer at the same time." So she said that they're just enjoying it. The kids are loving the program. They love the uniforms. It's actually turning out to be competitive like we wanted. We wanted them to feel like they were belonging to something. Thank you, Deb, for introducing me to this program. And I also want to just thank our middle school ADs who have been supportive of it, helping me getting everything together. And also to our Playball coordinators, Tila Jacobowitz-- together, and also to our Playball coordinators, Tila Jacobowitz, Amy Donovan, and Reginald Dujon at TMMS, for seamlessly adding this program into the schools. I'm moving on to the second part of my program, physical education and health. So I'm going to go over our elementary professional learning communities, monthly district PE professional development, Project Adventure, January in-service date, and also some PE health lesson highlights. So in our elementary PLC, some of our focus has included lesson tuning, standards-based lesson shares, best practices in PE, PE activities that promote academic discourse, nutrition in PE, lesson planning for small spaces or for when you don't have a classroom or you're in a hallway, which happens a lot to our PE teachers. So this is just an example of a lesson we worked on in our PLC from Steve Bellewue from Washington Elementary School. During National Nutrition Month, students had stations, and they had to read the nutrition facts label and perform exercises based on the facts that they had to identify. So if there were five jumping jacks, they had -- or five grams of fat, they had to do five jumping jacks, and it just went on like that. And then they had the little cards, and they checked off as they went. So for our monthly district PE, professional PD, sorry, we worked on strategies concerning motivating students in physical education, creating a supportive and inclusive PE program, formative assessment in PE, academic discourse in PE, and lesson planning for large groups. These were lessons that we used in our November PD at Drewitz Elementary School. We used different muscles to push, pull, and move our bodies across the gym using a scooter, and we tried to capture as many flags as possible. So the PE staff, we kind of pretended we were kids, and we participated in. This one was Ashley Laramies and Ivy Martin from Connery. The games were Mario Kart, and you had to try to get the flags, and then whoever had the most flags at the end, the flags were stuck in like a noodle that was on your back. It was really cute. And Ivy's -- excuse me. Ivy Martin's lesson share was called Hungry Hungry Hippos, and teams raced on scooters on their stomach, knees, or on their back. You can see we utilized all positions in the pictures. We had a good time. So balls were in the center circle in the gym, and four teams were at equal distance away. The team had a hula hoop as a collection bin. On the signal, the first player in each line races on the scooter to the center to grab a ball and bring it back. Next, the player in line goes to their teammates and has to return it, and it goes on like that. Then we had to count the balls to see who wins, and my team won, of course. This was one of our workshops on motivating students in physical education. We just need motivation strategies that promote short-term participation in class and long-term intrinsic motivation for our students. A lot of my staff has had complaining about older students not being as motivated, like fifth graders, just kind of not being into it, so we discussed strategies on how we can get them moving. We talked about adding certain music and letting them be a DJ, letting them create playlists before for the class, as long as they're appropriate. Got to check them first. One of our staff, Ashley, she has those gibbets, the crocs, and so when kids perform well, she'll give them a gibbet, which I thought that was adorable. So we kind of just went through barriers and ways that we could break through those barriers for our older students. This was our January in-service PD date. We were all together at Lynn Classical. The objective of Project Adventure is to create new games, new group games, with a focus on team-building and creating bonds among students. We experienced a variety of activities from the adventure-based programming. We learned age-appropriate assessment tools for use in class, and we explored core themes of grade -- by grade level. Project Adventure is a non-traditional physical education program, and it is an experiential-based learning process that focuses on cooperation, encourages students to take risks, accepts challenges and solves problems, teaches students to learn and trust and support each other, helps students to develop a positive self-concept by being part of an experience, promotes problem-solving activities that help the group work together, communicate, and solve problems differently. It also emphasizes verbal listening and physical skills in the group decision-making process, and allows different people with different skills the opportunity to lead a group. So students who aren't necessarily good at sports usually really take to these types of lessons and units. This was an example or a glimpse into our day. The first part of the day, we were all together. We did a lot of team-building, getting-to-know-you activities, and then we had lunch, and then we broke off into K through 5 and 6 through 12, so we had more grade-specific opportunities. This was called Connect Tiles. This was a problem-solving activity that helps the group work together, communicate, and solve problems. This is our first activity of the day, and my group, Derek Dana from Classical, I'm from Callahan, was on my team, and he was like an amazing puzzle solver. We were all just like -- he was just like, yeah, like that's that, and we were just like, I was, oh my gosh, like I never knew this about you. So it's fun, because you learn so much about people, you know? Yeah, he was looking at us, we were like, he's like, I'm like, oh, wow. So this is another activity that we did in Project Adventure in practice at Drewitz Elementary. Ashley Laramie had a few activities. I went and saw her. It's actually called Ubuntu Cards, and they are -- Ubuntu is a multifunctional deck of cards that encourage a group to interact, find connections, and have fun. So there are 54 cards in each deck and offer limitless reflection opportunities through metaphor, and just as many opportunities for group interaction and creative play. So I'm gonna show you a little clip from Ashley's class. So students start. So students would be in one corner of the gym, and then they had to find another student and find -- and match. If the student finds it first, they move to the next ball. That student can't move on until they match with someone. So I'm gonna have you guys do it with your partner next to you. And whoever -- whoever finds it first has to do -- gets to do five push-ups. So find your partner. Need a partner, raise your hand.
I get yours.
Nice work.
Does everybody have a partner? Alright, so what you're gonna do is you're gonna go one, two, three. Whoever, whoever, like you have to say the picture. So if you have the cheese in common, you can choose.
Can we do them on our knees?
I have my finger over the cap.
No, you get to do five push-ups.
I'm ready to compete.
Alright, settle down, people. Alright, so here are some out-of-the-box lessons from my PE and health staff. Paula Joyce at Lynn English, we're gonna go through her first. In Paula's Safety and Prevention Unit, she does a lesson using Drunk Buster's impairment goggles we ordered this fall. This educational tool shows students the real life risk of alcohol impairment safely through engaging in educational activities. So this was kind of her setup. She had all different stations. She had like one where it kind of is like, it's kind of like beer pong when you're putting the ball in the -- she has an obstacle course set up for the students, and what they do is they do the activity without the goggles, and then they put the goggles on and do it and see how worse they did, basically. So we have the Totally Wasted goggles. These goggles simulate a BAC of .26 and .35, which is about six to 10 drinks, if depending on your height and your weight and gender. So these goggles simulate reduced alertness, slow reaction time, confusion, visual distortion, alteration of depth and distance perception, reduction of peripheral vision, and double vision. We also have the Cannabis goggles. These simulate impaired coordination, slower reaction time, and a feeling of nausea. So I need two volunteers to come down.
Brian already, Brian already wanted the Totally Wasted goggles. We need some for the Cannabis goggles. Alright, so what you're gonna do is you're gonna do it first with no goggles, and then back. So go down with no, and then back.
Doing a great job, Brian.
I would expect nothing less, Brian.
Put the goggles on.
Good luck, Brian.
Oh my goodness. Am I supposed to look straight though?
Yep. Walk the walk, Brian.
Deb, how'd you write that up in the minutes?
Alright, Madison.
Very well done.
Excellent.
Great, great.
There you go, right?
You can just hold them on, too.
Let me get a picture for her. Take a picture for her.
We can get the Totally Wasted ones. One of those. We've got lawyers here.
You can do it.
She's got one. Oh, she's good.
You're doing pretty well.
Oh, I like her strategy.
You're doing excellent.
It's okay to fall on Member Dugan. Damn it, girl.
How did you feel? Do you think you could have driven a car with those on?
You don't have to answer that.
I can't.
Brian, you couldn't have.
Nope. Don't recommend it.
Alright, moving on to Kathy Woodbury at Harrington Elementary. She implemented a gymnastics unit, which I thought was really cool, because I don't really see this very much in our schools, because gymnastics is really important. It helps balance coordination, better control over your bodies and your muscles. So I'm just gonna show you a couple glimpses of what she was -- this is a pre-K class. So students performed skills related to balance, coordination, and a variety of locomotor and non- locomotor skills. This was a pre-K in kindergarten class, and she had stations all around, just jumping on the trampoline, and there was the little cheese mat where they did forward rolls. It was just really, really well-run, age-appropriate lesson, and I was really impressed with this. She also -- sorry. This was her fifth graders. She had actually -- these girls made progression from back walkovers to back handsprings during this unit, which I thought was amazing. There's just a couple of pictures here. So that mat, the cheese one, is one she ordered at the beginning of the year for this unit, and it's been really a great implementation into her school. So my last activity, Lorraine said she was gonna come up and demonstrate the back handspring. I'm gonna set up the mat. Yeah, I'm gonna spot you. Thank you for your time.
Member Castellanos, Member Magnolia, Member Dugan.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much for your presentation tonight. Very robust, a lot of information. I did have a question or two, maybe comments, around the therapy pieces, like the art therapy and the music therapy. I think that's phenomenal. I love that, and I think, could you, the two, so we have two art therapists?
We have two on-staff art therapists.
Okay. Could you kind of walk me through just a little bit of what they're -- I know what they do, because I've heard and worked closely with some of the clients that they work with students and families. Could you talk about that a little bit and why it's --
Yes.
The impact.
So I will speak to the music therapist.
Okay.
We have Jocelyn Fish, who's been staffed with us for about six or seven years now. She does a fantastic job. She -- they're both licensed therapists. Some of what Jocelyn does is private, do the nature therapy and everything else, so some sessions I'm not, but you can see others try to go with the clients. But she does, for example, down in school, she provides the music and But she does, for example, down in school, she provides the music instruction, the music in line, the music therapy and music education. So the students still receive all the same experiences that they would have at any other elementary school, but they also have the care and diversification that they need. She meets individually with students on an as-needed basis determined by her, the other therapeutic staff in the school, and by the principal. They use instruments, they use recordings. She does a lot of social justice music work so students can self-expression. Our new music therapist, Megan Fedor, who started this past year and she is now handling most of our secondary schools. She is at Fecto Leary for two days and then she travels around to the other secondary schools. I've seen her with the life skills and teams classes and she has a lot of choice-making activities. The students have a chance to socialize with each other. They can respond with instruments in the way that they see fit. She gives them options and any response is a great response, any response at all. There are group activities, there are individualized activities, it's part of their morning, um, movement, dance, scarves, responding on a drum, so.
Beautiful, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
And, um, the All City, um, band, all the work that, that, like, I've seen them all over the city. We appreciate that. It's, uh, it's, it's actually really refreshing to see, um, and the, all the ceremonies, all the events, all the, the different, um, just, you could see, you could see it in their faces when they're performing. It's beautiful. It's something that we can't, like, I didn't know the, the year on that, I didn't know how long it's been around for. So like to have all the schools come together, like, when you walked me through that and like to see the camaraderie, the routine, the, the, you know, the commitment, um, it's, it's, it's really, it's really nice.
Thank you so much, especially marching band, you know, all kinds of weather.
Oh, no, it's, every Friday night, the game, oh, you see, it's, they're, they're about it. We appreciate that.
Member Magnolia, Member Dugan, Member Gailey, and Member Capola.
First, I would just want to say thank you for the music program. I know it is definitely one of the highlights of my, uh, my daughter's school year is being able to participate. Um, I, I did have a quest, a couple questions for Ms. Peterson, though. The other reports included staffing levels and yours did not. Is, can you just kind of talk generally about, um, what kind of staffing, um, the, I think the athletics, because there, there are teachers who are also working in the schools, but really the health and PE, are we at a deficit? Are we fully staffed? Do we need more staff? What's the state of staffing in that department?
Um, so all elementary schools have PE once a week. Some have two teachers that float between two different buildings. Um, we have three at Marshall Middle School, two at Marshall Middle School, two health teachers at Marshall Middle School. Breed has, um, two PE teachers and one health teacher, Pickering, the same. Actually, Breed has three PE teachers, I'm sorry. Lynn Classical has two teachers teaching health, but they also teach PE. Total of five PE with two teaching health. And Lynn English has, I think they have like seven. And I think they all, mostly all of them teach one period of health.
Thank you. And then my second question was about, um, you alluded to the schools with no facilities for dedicated PE space. Um, I happen to have a kid who has to do PE in the hall. A lot of those really wonderful activities are necessitated with space, right? Like to be able to run around and, you know, compare things is a lot harder in a hallway than it is in a gym. Can you talk from an equity perspective about how PE teachers are able to achieve equity among the schools, given that there is a space restriction?
Yeah, I mean, when it's nicer, they can go outside and a lot of them do go outside, I feel, um, a lot. But yeah, we've, we've been working on different lesson plans that go along with our standards. Um, for instance, we had a PLC where we talked about, um, doing tennis and like if you had a hallway and you take, um, a clothes hanger and you make it into a triangle, I actually did this because I taught in a hallway, um, and you buy nylon knee highs and you wrap them with, um, duct tape. And then you have little tennis, um, brackets and you do balloons and you have a line down the hallway and they can go back and forth. Just activities like that, using like those soft balls. We have a lot of those yarn balls, they're called, and those are great. People in the gyms are using them as well, so. But yeah, it is, it is a challenge being in the hallway. I've been there, um, and I'm supporting our, our staff that are in the hallways to make other lessons equitable.
Yeah, one of my concerns especially is that, um, when kids have to do PE in the hallways, they can't make noise. And, you know, they might get the physical activity out, but that's a, that's a stress release. And if you're in a school without a cafeteria or a gym, you don't have an opportunity to get that stress out in terms of the noise factor, right? Like I can remember my own PE from elementary school, like, when you're hitting that ball, doesn't matter if it's a yarn ball or an actual tennis ball, right? You're, "Yah!", you're, you're making the noise, you're getting that out. When you do PE in the hall, you can't do that. You, you can't disrupt the classes. So, um, I, I think this is a really important issue that we need to take into consideration when we're thinking about just this equity issue because this, you can't do that gymnastics if you don't have a gym. And so, you know, it's wonderful that, that PE teacher can do that, but it makes me concerned about the kids who will never be able to do those things in elementary school because there's just not physical space to.
I would like to address the traveling teachers, too, as I spent my entire 15 years teaching here as a traveling teacher. I know that Colleen has experience with that, too. I have to really give a shout out to our staff for their flexibility and ingenuity in how they manage this. You are right, it is sometimes very challenging and I wish there was a better solution, but they are finding solutions and I'm so proud of them for the way that they make, and the students, too, and the other staff in the school. So I definitely want to recognize that. I see some very creative and flexible staff that we have here.
Thank you.
Do you want to add something on that as well? Because obviously I think that the, the, it's a great point and the, and the, um, uh, LPS team is sort of thinking creatively how to address that, like in the reality we have now. It's also something we're trying to address with the facilities, uh, comprehensive plan for at the elementary level because absolutely recognize that the real inequity is there and, and that was one of the, that's one of the takeaways so far. You all remember, we did that elementary school master plan and, uh, well, we've made a lot of progress on the class size because of a lot of investment and creative thinking about where to put classrooms and so on and so forth. When you, when you think about the spaces that you need, we're, we're short just about the, the equivalent of an entire elementary school in the city. If you, if you had every elementary school have the space that a modern school would have. So, you know, certainly something that we're, that we're, that we're pushing on for the long term to, to create those facilities.
Member Dugan.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. That was really wonderful. I had a chance to go visit the All City Art exhibit and it was just, it was tremendous just to see the artwork and, you know, the pride in the kids, too. Like, you know, I saw a lot of the families and the children there and just the pride they had showing their parents or their guardians, whoever they were with, uh, their artwork and their teachers and, uh, so that was a, a great experience. It was mentioned, um, that high school art is an elective. Um, I'm just curious about the numbers on that. Up, down, kind of, like, how are we doing there?
So Dr. Kobanski can get back to you on specific figures. I know that she has them, but, um, in my experience, being, working alongside art teachers my whole career and sitting in the same office as Dr. Kobanski, working closely with her, I've watched her department continue to grow and I've seen that the, um, requests for art class at all of our secondary schools continues to get bigger and bigger. I know that she added a second art teacher over at Lynn Tech last year due to what the students were asking for in their survey and I'm sure she can get back to you with more exact data on that.
Great. And then music, uh, you know, Brian touched a little bit on the music therapy and the art therapy as well. Wonderful things. I'd love to see music theory on there because that can lead to production and, you know, just different pathways for kids. And then, um, just on to the athletics. Athletics are, are such a huge part of, uh, art, music as well. I'm, I'm not belittling in those at all. These are all about pathways, right? For our students and things they can do beyond high school. But the things, athletics can be transformative to a school. You know, uh, being able to see Coach Abreu coach and Warren and Tyrese play, um, and then, you know, even the winter with, uh, Coach Avery and his son Marvin Jr., just the joy it brings to the kids, be able to see their classmates perform so well and do so well. Uh, so I really like the Play Ball initiative that we have going. And, you know, the mentorship, too. Uh, you mentioned Coach Moreno. Uh, I know from experience, you know, he coached my older son, uh, in soccer. My older son's off playing college soccer now and it's because of Coach Moreno. It's because of Eric. And just the mentorship that that can create. Coach Zukowski, my, my younger son's playing baseball for him now, and Jack Morrison with golf. So just the connections kids can make with their coaches and, and just the pathways that it can provide. So my question, you know, I love the Play Ball initiative. I think it's really important that we're getting the, the younger kids, the middle schoolers, just involved in sports more. Um, you know, it's not a, it, you know, it's not a surprise that our numbers are going down in sports and I think this is a great way to, to kind of boost them up, you know, just getting kids exposed to that. Eric, obviously, has got a great idea with the soccer numbers up. I think he's probably got a pipeline going over to Glasgow, which is, no, no, I'm just teasing, I'm just teasing. But, um, my question is, moving forward with Play Ball, so you, you mentioned this was sort of initiative this spring. Um, how are we gonna, um, I know we met and talked about this earlier, but just for the rest of the committee, um, how are we gonna move forward with that?
So there is three years, there are three tiers of funding. So year one is up to, um, 25,000. Year two would be up to, so next year will be in year two, at up to 50,000. And then year three and beyond could be up to 75,000.
So our goal is three sports, right? Three seasons. Uh, the appeal of this program for both Colleen and I was the competitiveness, the, um, teams' feel, the relationship with one coach. We've always had, um, intermurals, but it was always structured that everyone comes to the gym, you split everyone up into teams, but each time you came, it was a different team that you were on. This is very different. They are teams, they stay as a team, they have uniforms, they have the same coach every time. And, uh, we're hoping, when we met with Steven Drike, Superintendent Steven Drike from Salem is the one who contacted me on it and I brought Colleen to go meet with Play Ball. And, uh, Superintendent Drike and I talked about, you know, possibly having like tournament, a tournament on a weekend where, you know, Salem could play Lynn and they could play multiple games and have little mini tournaments and, uh, you know, the potential for this is great.
Right, right.
We also talked about doing that within our city with Breed, Pickering, and Marshall. And one of the, um, coordinators brought to me like, "Oh, is there money in the budget for like a trophy for each school?" And then at the end, and I was like, "I didn't even think to put that in the budget." So that's definitely something that I think would, would be, uh, more of a motivator for our kids to join these teams.
Right, great, thank you. And thank you for all your work and, uh, I look forward to an update next year at some point and we can kind of see where we're going with this. But it's very exciting stuff and thank you to all of you because, again, providing pathways for our kids, that's what this is about. You know, kind of a non-traditional, you know, future for them and, and I think this is all wonderful, wonderful stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Member Gailey, Member Capola.
So, um, Colleen, I was just wondering if they could develop a goggle that would, um, have students become aware of what the effects of Jules are on them. You know, because they do get tired and they can't move as fast.
Well, you know what? I used to do an activity, um, where I'd take the kids to the gym and I'd give them all a straw and they would have to do an activity, like a physical activity, just breathing in and out through the straw. And it was really hard and I was like, "This is what emphysema feels like."
That was like, so, um, I love the interaction here. That was so much fun today. I, I think this was like one of the most, and we can all attest, most fun.
Thank you.
Interactive.
You can hire me for the next one.
Oh, that's coming May 11th, isn't it? And, um, I would like to know if there's any way we could get like in October, like, uh, drama performances that the school committee could put on, like, we can put it on our calendars so when other things are coming up in our lives, because we're very busy, we could say, "Oh no, I'm going to this performance or I'm gonna be late to your event." But that could be.
We certainly can make sure that you are included in when the performances are coming up out of the finance department. We have performances year long with everything, with drama, with our new dance program, with all of the various music groups, so definitely we can make sure that's communicated.
Way in advance.
Oh, yes.
And I want you to know, I went to the Christmas show at Shoemaker and talk about all-inclusive. I walked away crying. I, I was just so touched by the whole program and it, it was unbelievable. And I would recommend everybody on this committee try to make it up there to, um, see that.
I agree. That music teacher is Lisa Moriarty and she has a lot of experience working with the coach program over there. It is amazing what she can get out of them and the, one, they're one of the most respectful student audiences I've seen for anything. When we brought the high school group for their informants, we could not believe their response to us and how receptive they were.
It's just unreal. And Colleen, I always have to ask about my little hockey. If it's possible to someday in middle school, learn to skate and then hockey, I would really appreciate it because our numbers in the high school hockey team keeps going down, down, and down. And if you can't pay to go to Lynn for learn to skate, then you don't learn how to skate. And I think it is an equity, um, issue because I recall on Friday nights, uh, when my son was playing in 2013, how many students were just like packed in there for free skate, just to learn, just to get on that ice and skate. So I'll ask you that again, if you can figure out a way to do it, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. And thank you for all you did and both of yous did an excellent job. Okay. The goggles, there was a story in our local paper and it was in Lynnfield, showing the goggles. And when I read the story, I said, "Why can't we have that?" And here you are, Colleen, so appreciate that. And, um, on the music program, our instruments, um, do we have instruments still that we loan to students or are they all, we do? Okay.
Yes, and we continue to add to that.
Oh, that's good. So any time that we've had, uh, people who said they're donating instruments, they are going to?
Absolutely.
Be used, okay.
We've had several large donations the last couple of years that you approved.
Right, exactly.
I will say that Julie takes a very good issue, meticulously cares for those, um, when they're collected, you know, she makes sure they're stored properly. She takes very good care of those instruments.
The recent donation that you approved a few months ago from the Curtain family?
Yes.
We just put it in order today for two alto saxophones.
Oh, wonderful. That's great. Good. And I think the people who donate it would be glad to hear also that they're, that they're used. And she didn't mention golf in middle school. Ms. Gailey didn't mention golf in middle school.
Yeah.
I thought you would mention it, but anyways, it's feeding up to the high schools. I mean, it is a problem for them and just wondering if, uh, you know, the Play Ball situation could maybe have something like that.
Yeah, could look into that and see if other school districts have, have you done golf with Play Ball?
And on a personal note, I thank you guys and Lynn Woods' staff for doing the music part for the signing because that benefited my granddaughter and it's very touching. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Castellanos.
Cable, I didn't ask any questions around health and physical education. I slipped that. I had a good time doing this, uh, exercise. I hope folks who are watching share with your families and your kids. Don't do things that you're not supposed to do while driving. Mass Comprehensive health standard, can you talk about the last time this was revised and can you kind of go into that piece of like what that looks like as we are trying to navigate, kind of outdated?
You know, um, 1999.
Yes.
That's where they're from. They were supposed to have updated them, I think in 2020 and that didn't happen. So we are going to have to move on without them. And hopefully they will come out soon.
Is there any pulse of like when that might happen?
No.
Okay. I do see like additional projects and as I was thinking, um, and I was a student athlete once, believe it or not, um, and, you know, I learned so many fundamentals as an athlete of, uh, of leadership particularly. Have we ever talked about or thought about possibly setting up a student athlete leadership development program?
Have you been like listening to my emails or my?
Oh, I didn't see any emails, but I would love to, could, could we add that as a project?
Well, so actually, um, me and the A.D.s had a meeting, um, on Monday and we had an issue with one of the teams this year and at, um, a conference that Molly and I attended. and at a conference that Molly and I attended, Intervillains in Sports, there was a school district that has a leadership course for team captains. And we were like sold on it. And then I went to City Hall the other day to meet with the Department of Public Health. And I was, we were talking about just collaborating on all sorts of things. And someone mentioned that they had someone who would be interested in doing that, a leadership course. And I said for like the, over the summer, do it for the fall coaches and then again in the, I mean, the fall captains. And then again for winter and for spring. Because we put these children in leadership roles and they don't know how to be a leader. And I feel like they aren't going to do justice to what they're supposed to be doing if if they don't have those skills, no one's teaching them. So that's definitely something that we're working on.
I'm glad. I think it's very needed and I would love to see that come to fruition. I do get to participate in the health advisory meetings. We've been able to attend them. Marshall was the last one. In.
Lynn English.
In Lynn English. And we have the opportunities to have discussions around the issues that are in the schools right now. We have students there, staff, members of the school committee have joined. I think that's a fantastic advisory process. I really do see a lot of value in it. I do want to just echo or just add that I think there's more to be done with those advisory meetings. I think there's a lot more. I feel like there's a lot of good ideas that come out of those meetings that just stay ideas. I just would like to see, you know, as we are, you know, meeting with different stakeholders that we organize and prioritize and execute those initiatives. Because there's a lot, there's a lot here, like there's a lot. I can imagine there's so many things that you, we all want to do and accomplish. I just think it's very important to make sure that we narrow down the the projects and really like strategically, you know, time those out and follow through. Because there are very important issues like vaping, Substance Abuse Coalition work that, you know, folks are doing and in the communities now. And and I see that we're doing district bullying also initiatives that kind of highlighting some of the issues around bullying. Cyberbullying is something that is a real issue right now. Social media is changed our, I wish, again, going back to the curriculum updates or the updates that we need, I wish that we would have some guidance to help us to drive that. But like you said, we have to create our own processes to execute the safety and overall well-being of our kids.
Yep. I think, yeah, I think, yeah, I think, yeah, I think, yep.
Colleen, Member Capola made me think about golf and I forgot to mention golf. Thank you very much for this. I first want you to know, and I know you do know this, that during the month of July, our city offers a free clinic to little kids, two to sixteen or older, four weeks. Every Monday, eight, eight-thirty, people get out there and help them to learn how to play golf. But what you didn't know was when I was the intramural person over at Pickering, I used to have a spring golf. I taught them how to swing the club, I taught them how to play golf. But when I first started learning golf, I was over at Breed and I literally had like a team of kids and I brought them over to Kelly Green's after I taught them how to play a hole or two, then we had a little tournament at the end. It was a lot of fun. Thank you, Mrs. Capola, for reminding me.
You're welcome.
We can hire you as the coordinator.
And if you'd like me to talk it over with you, because some members have old golf clubs and we donate it to people, we just give them back, give them out to the kids, help them.
Yeah.
Any way we can. Thank you.
Okay. On on the fine arts budget, it's very small where it says uniforms, cleaning. But, you know, is that a sufficient budget?
We have had some challenges this year as the program continues to grow and like we said with everything, costs continue to increase. So it would be very helpful to increase those lines specifically for dry cleaning but also purchasing new uniform pieces. We want to make sure that all of the students feel like they don't have to worry about what they're wearing when they perform. They know that they will be able to be part of the group. We use separates so there can be some inclusivity to them. They can choose to wear pants, dress, top, coat. We have some mix and match pieces. But to continue to offer that for everyone so that nobody has to think, oh, I can't join that because I can't buy a black and white outfit.
Right.
Or I can't clean it.
Thank you.
I'm Cassianas.
I'm so sorry again, I have to, I need to add this question. Inclusion for our students who can't participate physically, what are we doing to add them into some of these activities? What are some of the, I guess, the, some of the work that we're doing?
For P E?
Yes.
We will. You can modify any activity for your students in the class if you, they're included in your regular P E classes. A bigger ball, bigger bat, have them do small sided games, have them have a peer member helping. We, I always used to have the Coach Program in my classes when I was at Classical and they participated in everything and our kids loved having them. And I just modified it to whatever their specific disability was or need.
We also have adaptive P E teachers and they work with our most physically challenged children.
I appreciate that. And to remember Magnolia's point around equity, I was thinking about their equipment piece, like what do we have? I guess adaptive equipment.
They had a budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the for the presentation, really, really.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, all the folks that work on those areas. Next, we have graduation dropout update on data and strategy. Yep.
Okay, all right, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
All right. I don't have any goggles and I don't have any community builders, but I am going to stick to the script because I'm sure that Mr. McHugh is timing me according to each slide. Good evening. I'm going to share the graduation and dropout accountability data. And then I'm going to highlight the action steps we've taken this year to initiate or, excuse me, to investigate some of the gaps and plan for accelerating improvement in the Lynn Public Schools. All this data can be found on the DESI District Profile page. But I would like to thank Josh Mower for converting this data into the graphs that you're going to see. Before we begin this evening, I'd like to orient us to looking at the data from a pre-pandemic to post-pandemic lens. That is to say, instead of comparing 2022 to 2021, I'd like us to look at the difference from 2019 to 2022. Okay? So for example, if you just look at the trends here, if you look all the way back to 2014 to 2019, you're going to see that we were in the mid seventies for our graduation rates. In 2022, we're at eighty-three point one. This is not where we aspire to be, but it is a jump from what we were trending before the pandemic. Okay, now, when we look at select populations of those students, we see the variation in performance. So we also see a movement upward, but there is a vast gap with our multilingual students. Oh, and just for clarification, you're going to hear me go back and forth between M Ls and Ls. And that's because the English learners are still the official accountability category. But in the Lynn Public Schools, we like to use asset-based language around multilingual learners. Here, when we look at race ethnicity, again, we see a troubling gap from the biggest population of Hispanic Latino at eighty point one percent compared to our smallest population of Asian at ninety-seven point one percent. This concerning gap is a national trend. What's interesting here in Lynn is the performance of the African-American Black population at eighty-eight point seven percent, which outperforms the white subgroup at eighty-seven point one percent. And that is not a national trend. Now, just to give ourselves a little orientation to how other urban districts do as well, this will show us a comparative. And again, I want to just call our attention to 2019, which is the green line, to 2022, which is the red line. So in this graph, you will see overall, we are the second highest performing graduation rate, second only to Springfield. Interestingly, you'll also see we had the third largest jump from 2019 with eight point three percentage points. Lawrence and Springfield were about eleven percent percentage points increase. And I'm going to talk about how we looked at those districts later on. Oops, sorry. Okay. Here, I just want to caution us that when we're looking at the schools, we're not looking to compare schools. We're looking to see the growth or the performance in each of the schools. So again, when you look at the difference between 2019 and 2022, you can see that there's been an increase in graduation in each of our schools. Now, we're going to switch gears and we're going to look at dropout. And again, we're going to be looking at that dropout data through the pre-pandemic 2019 compared to the 2022. School year 2020 and school year 2021 were years of remote learning and laxed attendance and grading policies. We were focused on the physical and mental health of our students. In order to look at this data from an academic perspective, I ask that we isolate 2019 and 2022. And here you will see that we fared better this year than in years prior to 2020, 2019. However, this is not where we want to be. And so we aspire within one to two years to cut this rate in half. Here is where the real learning lies. When we get curious about the gaps, then we can start looking at some of those root causes. For example, what is happening in our instruction and curriculum choices that is hitting home for our Asian, Black and White students that is not landing for our Hispanic and multi-race students? What internal factors in the school system and external factors in our students' lives are pulling and pushing these students toward or away from completion in school? We're going to dive into those questions right now. But before we do, I just want to explain this piece about what does performance look like overall for each subgroup? So for example, in this, and this is probably one of our most startling data points. But here we see that eleven point one percent of all Ls drop out of the Lynn Public Schools. This is why we have such a sense of urgency to meet our students where they are. This is the work that we've been doing over the last couple of years. And then this one as well is as alarming. So this one is eleven point one percent of our multilingual learners of all learn, of all the E L learners drop out. And then this graph means that of the four point three percent of dropout, that's our dropout rate, sixty-eight point five percent of those students are in the E L program. That is a stark difference from 2014.
Just a quick question. If we collect data about when these students join the Lynn Public School system, do we, do we know that to layer that on top of this to disaggregate, say, students who might join us in 10th grade that might drop out as E Ls versus students who might join us in kindergarten as E Ls? Do we know that?
Yes.
Okay.
So we can see when they join. And also right on the website, on the DESI website, you can also see when they drop out. And our biggest dropout, our most shocking dropout is 11th grade. But this year, and these aren't official, so that's accountability. But I've put together a team and we're working and looking at these numbers and that number's getting earlier. Where right now, we have a lot of Hispanic 10th grade boys who are dropping out right now.
And and do, do those dropouts tend to be students who had joined much later? Or they, do they tend to be students who have been in the, since the beginning?
Yeah, they're overaged and they're overaged and undercredited students.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, this, and this problem, Dr. Magnolia, is, goes beyond the Lynn Public Schools. But that is something I'm going to address tonight.
Perfect, thank you.
Sure. Okay, so let's talk about that. The most important thing about dropout to know is that the trajectory begins at entrance. So to your point, yes, it all, it does begin for some students pre-K and K if they have chronic attendance. And then for other students, it can begin in ninth grade if that's where their entrance is. But nationally, the data shows that chronic attendant, chronic absenteeism is is a major contributor to the trajectory for dropout. On the reverse, though, it also shows that steady stability in programming also, you know, obviously leads to completion. So that that quote is, this idea about dropping out is a process, not an event. I also just want to underscore, it's not a secondary, it's not a secondary issue or process that happens in secondary school. It happens throughout. Okay. So we do have a locus of control in the work that we do. In fact, we have a lot of influence in our students' lives. And even though the three primary factors on the surface might look like beyond our our influence, they're not. And so socioeconomic status, their current status right now, obviously, they come in with a certain status. But our programming that could lead to internships, paid internships, ability to work and study at the same time would directly influence their current socioeconomic status. And same for attendance and motivation and engagement. So we're, we're going to use language here that's pull and push factors, but it's what's pulling students out, what's pushing students out. So just a refresher on the macro, micro, meso levels that influence students. You have the individual factors, as you can see, educational history, behaviors, skill set. You have family factors, family structure, economic circumstances. I'm not going to read all of them, but just the general. And then school factors, the school climate, discipline policies, practices, relationships. And then finally, community factors are the community resources, peer groups and role models. So these push out factors or effects, rather, these are the situations that students experience in school. And so even when we talk about the disconnection or not enough support for L students, those are things obviously we've been working on and the whole state has when you talk about building a sense of belonging. But specifically in the Lynn Public Schools, we've shifted our focus area for the. But specifically in the Lynn Public Schools, we've shifted our focus area for the district prioritization plan to land specifically on L1s and L2s. So our first and second-year English learners. And then what pulls students away, what can pull students out of schooling? These tend to be external factors, like adolescent pregnancy, poor economic circumstances, opportunities for employment, and caretaking responsibilities. So even with these factors, though, we here also have a certain sense of not just responsibility, but influence and our role to create opportunities for students. And like, so for example, even with something like adolescent pregnancy, we do some work around tutoring. We partner with Catholic Charities that has a Young Mothers Program for young moms who are 16 to 24 years old. And so we can help them put the resources in their hands to be able to access those services. So the protective factors, right? What is going to be able to really help them? This is the area that we've been focusing our effort on this year. So we're talking about the caring relationships, participation in the co-curricular activities, positive school climate, getting families involved, partnering with families, having authentic relationships with families. And then how do we engage students? As you saw in all these presentations tonight, how do we engage students in really aspiring to do what they dream about, like being a lawyer, or a musician, or an athlete? So that's the work that we've been looking at this year. So this is a very long list, and I don't, many of these things have been running for years in the Lynn Public Schools, so I'm only going to highlight some pieces from this year that we've been doing. And there's a lot of intersectionality with that work in different departments. So for example, when you look at the first bullet with the Welcome Center, Improving Practices for Supporting Families. So Yvette and her team in the Welcome Center have partnered with Charlie Gallo and Ronya Caldwell from the MLE Department around better communication to families for what are the different opportunities. So for example, LEPI being an opportunity was not something before, previously, that we might have been communicating. As well, this year, we have the Attendance and Discipline Workshops. So Charlie Gallo has been doing work with that. Lauren Walsh and Kristin Freer have been partnering with him. I've been working with the Guidance Department, the Guidance, Secondary Guidance Department around looking at our credit recovery, you know, assessing where the barriers in credit recovery, where we're not able to meet the students' needs because the materials aren't differentiated enough. So these are the types of things that we have been focusing on in order to have a direct impact on engaging students more. A couple of things I'm mostly excited about is the Alternative Pathways Team. So we pulled together a research team to look at what's happening in Springfield, what's happening in Lawrence, what are some programs that we could go and visit and maybe bring back some ideas here. That team as well is very broad, so it has multiple members from all different, you know, school level, district level, different departments. And right now, we're finalizing some of the work we've done and putting together a proposal to show Dr. Alvarez and Superintendent Rogiro about where we think we can go forward. Okay, so now we're going to look at the individual schools, or rather, levels. So elementary schools are the heart of belonging and teaching, kindness, respect, and inclusion. The clinical model has allowed for calibrated practices and presentations along with curriculum to support empathy and acceptance. And then this year, we added the inclusivity panels to Drewitts, Tracy, and Hood. So we're engaging that work in Student Voice and youth participatory research projects. We're not there yet, but we're starting to introduce that work in the elementaries. Middle school has been focusing on student engagement and expanding opportunities for healthy activities, combined with elevating student voice, as you saw today with our civics presentation. And so what's new here is the Play Ball, which you also saw this evening, and the dual-language planning. So at this point, it takes several years to plan out. So we started planning for the students who are at Harrington to be moving to Thurgood Marshall in a dual model. And then similarly, in high school, you can see a robust menu of options and activities that we've been working on and that have been there in place. And in regards to the vaping piece, so vaping has been a big topic of conversation, obviously, and concern for the high schools. And so they've been pulling in a lot of, you know, like, materials and information around that into their advisories and their mentoring rooms. As well, it's actually related here with the mental health piece. So what's new for the mental health piece is the Lynn Classical RAM Center. That's a place where they, to what a member, Castellanos, was talking about before, with the vaping as a consequence. And so the RAM Center is an opportunity where students can get some counseling around it, learn about it, learn about addiction. And then when our emotions are regulated and balanced, then we can engage in the academic rigor. So this year, I'd like to highlight what has been the work with the CTE-L Planning Grant, so that's the third bullet down. Also, the RAMS I mentioned as the mentoring program, but also they have used a Mass Grad Grant to create a 9th and 10th grade Rising Acceleration Camp. And then the High Interest Semester Courses that the ELA Assistant Director of Curriculum has done, which you've seen prior to this evening, but the work around getting students engaged in the topics and themes that they're interested in. And then finally, raising student voice has been our focus for the last few years. A big piece here is the inclusivity panel work that has been happening in the middle in high schools. And so I am going to ask Mary Jewels to mark the calendar for School Committee, that they have their youth convening on May 18th at Brede from 5:00 to 7:30. So I know that was fantastic. You have that? Yeah, 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 great. Okay, and so then this final one is just to close on what's on the horizon for us. So both Secretary Cardone at the federal level and then Secretary Tottweiler, their FOKI, have been equity excellence and reimagining pathways to quality education. We've had the Mass Grad Grant has been expanding, as well as the early college opportunities. And I know it's very little, but that last bullet, the Ford and Washington as community schools as well, is just a really exciting time, right? And opportunity for students to thrive with the resources that they need. So these are just a few pieces of, you know, the opportunities that are out there, the partnerships with philanthropists that we could really engage with, and then the innovative ideas that are both here and out abroad. So that is what we've been working on this year, and I look forward to any of your questions.
Member Dugan, Ameripania.
Thank you. That was a really great presentation. Very concise, to the point, so I do appreciate that. A couple of questions. I think one of the larger factors would be, especially at the high school level, disconnection. Is there any mentoring program for our L students at that level where they can, you know, they just kind of have a go-to adult at the high school where, you know, that person's forming a relationship and a connection with that student?
Yeah.
Is there availability of that?
Yep. So the work that they've, two things that they put in place this year. One is the Teen Drop-In Center with LEAP, the LEAP Program out of Salem. And that's open to all and any students, but that was a certain select group of students that they were targeting. And as well, they are using, there's a Bulldogs Plan in there, which I just didn't mention, but it's one of the bullets, that is working around Ls and inviting them back for Saturday School and some summer programming that is based on relationship. I mean, all of the academics are based on relationship, but...
Thank you. And then PBIS was mentioned a few times. I do have experience with that in my career. I wonder what, so I do kind of know what that looks like at the elementary level, but are we consistent with that across elementary, middle, high school? I mean, is that something that's consistently used? Is it something we kind of dip our toes into?
Right. So right now, we currently have 10 schools that are involved in PBIS, but each school has, because it's really just a framework, and then the school builds out what that looks like. But this year, we had a bit of a transition. Felicia Jamerson's office was overseeing PBIS, and then, you know, she departed. So the focus is really about how do you have building-wide routines and rituals that encourage students to be part of? And then what incentives do you do? And to increase that, and what data do you look at? So it's a framework that looks different in every school, but the premise is the same.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yep, sure.
Member Pena.
Thank you for the presentation. And those numbers are, you know, although they're great, they're increasing, but still, it's heartbreaking to see that, you know, the number of Ls dropping out. And we got to think about, you know, where we place these kids, because there are kids that are 17, 18 years old, being placed in the 9th grade. And I could just picture myself, you know, as a 9th, you know, being a 17 or 18-year-old, being with 9th graders, how do I feel? Do I fit in? Do I have a sense of belonging? And then, you know, I grew up poor, you know? I see, you know, as a single mother, I seen her struggle, you know? And back then, it was a challenge. And I can imagine how hard it is for families. And just think about it, we came off of a pandemic, and I don't care what race you are, you know? Like, when you're struggling to worry about what you're going to eat, how you're going to, where you're going to live? Like, I don't think education is the first thing in your mind. So we need to think outside of the box, like, how can we help? Can we collaborate with other nonprofits to really help? You know? I remember being the single dad myself. It was hard, you know? And I had to make sure my kids go to school, and I had to try to pay the bills. Like, it was hard to do that by myself. Thank God, you know? I asked for help, and then I was able to get opportunities and things, but it was hard work, you know? And like, it breaks my heart to think about, we have unaccompanied minors that are coming there. We got to find a way to, like, collaborate, maybe get federal funding to really help these kids, like, housing and stuff. And Mr. Dugan talked about belonging, like, are we making them feel welcome? You know, we got to think about, where are we placing these kids? Like, we got to really start thinking about outside of the box. Can we get extra help for them? Like, you know?
Lenny, I actually can tell you that that's exactly what we were looking at with the Alternative Pathways. So we were looking at credentialing.
Yeah.
We were looking at, like, how can we place them in an age-appropriate grade and then back, you know, like, backfill credit with credit recovery classes? I do have to tell you, one of the most impactful stories, it's super quick, that I was just astounded at and, you know, shared with my children. On Christmas, I was a homeless liaison in Lynn English. And on Christmas, one of my students was evicted from an attic apartment because it was illegal. And so I picked that student up, an L, first-year L student, didn't speak any English. And I just picked that student up and drove him, and sorry that I wasn't meant to pick him up, but I picked him up and I drove him to Boston to a shelter. He had three questions. Where am I going to sleep? Where am I going to eat? And where am I going to go to school? Those were his three questions. Because the pathway to learning skills is through some form of education. But in 2022, we have to think differently about what education looks like, because it's not a square classroom, A, B, C, D blocks. It has to be multiple pathways.
Life skills.
Light, exactly. And getting those skills, those work-job skills, that you can start earning money right now, because that's what you need to do.
You also think about parent and family.
Right, absolutely. And just the whole community coming together. But to your point, it takes grant funding.
We also want to be careful that we don't segregate.
That's right.
Right? So there's a balance to it all.
Oh, yeah, no pathway would, so each pathway is really, any child could need, it could be a language, but they could be in class two, you know, for work skills.
I just wanted to make sure.
And also, I want to touch on the RAM Center, like, that, I love that, you know? And I wish we can, I figure, like, how much torture can we give a student in-house suspension in the kind of, something designed like that for all students?
And that's actually grant-funded, too. That's Mass Grad Grant that is funding the center, right? It's very supportive, and it's sort of connected to the art therapy piece, right? You know, the art therapy that's happening in elementary would fit in that model.
Thank you.
Member Paul. When you talk about the pregnancy issue, and you say that, you know, you have something to work on, does that include childcare?
Yes, actually, I can share the resources with you. So we had Catholic charities come and present to the guidance counselors. Talking about equity again, though, the, a barrier with Catholic charities is that you need a social security number.
Exactly. So we're talking about our kids.
Yeah.
And they don't have a social security number.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you haven't solved that problem. And I'd like to see that we solve that, because the only program we had here in Lynn, the daycare is closing. So that program is not available to any of these gals who have had it. You know, I've called around for them. They've been put on wait lists, you know? And whether they'll be able to be picked up is probably not the case. You know, the only program that was available did not have those restrictions, but there isn't anything for these gals. So dropout is the only alternative for them.
Absolutely, Member Capola.
Unless we create something within our system for them. And we need to do that. You know, when classical was built, there was room placed in those plans that were supposed to be for a daycare for students, and it wasn't. And I think that in a lot of the high schools that we have, we really need that. I know I've talked to Dr. Alvarez about it, and I think it's promising. She's, you know, I think, I think, I think, that's all I can say. Feel really bad about these gals.
Member Galey.
Have you thought about possibly, back in 2013, when I was working in secondary ed here in Lynn, a lot of students that are Ls or Hispanic backgrounds, they, I used to work for Mass Migrant, and a lot of Spanish people, they have to go and work different jobs. And their jobs sometimes keep them up late at night so that they have a hard time getting to school in the morning, or they have to go to work in the morning, and happens at 16 years old, when you're able to go to work. So the scheduling in the high schools, maybe, someone had mentioned, when English high school was being remodeled, renovated, we were on a dual schedule. Like, certain students could go in in the morning, certain students would work in the afternoon, work from noon to five, like, go to school noon to 5:00, because we need to start looking, thinking outside the box and start looking at those alternatives. Because when you're talking about, you know, the basic needs of students that are coming into this country, into Lynn, Massachusetts, they do need a place to live, they do need to know where their food is, and they do need to know how they can get their education. And that's what I'm hoping Dr. Alvarez is going to be able to help us with. And that's what I'm hopeful for. So, I just wanted to mention that, because that could be a way to stop the dropouts, because you don't have to quit, because you can still go to school.
Yeah, flexible scheduling is something that we've been talking about. We do have After Dark as an example of like a sliding schedule, where students can attend at different hours. And the LEAP program is just another, it's a program, not a school, but it has different hours later afternoon hours. So, that, that's something that we've been looking at.
Thank you.
Member Castellanos.
I appreciate that very much, your presentation and all the data points that you said, you shared with us. Startling, you know, some of them, some of those points were pretty concerning. I think there's also, there's, there's equity and significant barriers within that population, that we need deeper legislative support. I have, I became a U.S. citizen when I was 14. I was a freshman in high school. I actually had a green card that expired. And I was so scared and so embarrassed. It was very expensive to go have to pay the fees. I was, you, you really can't tell what, what I looked like. But deep inside, I, I, my father was embarrassed. We were all really nervous to, to, to have to navigate, you know, like to who we can talk to, who to disclose that with. And that impacted everything. And I, I remember being so blessed and so lucky to have that, that, that paperwork to legalize me, because I was able to work at McDonald's, my first job. And that job provided me with so many lifelines. And I needed that job so bad, because I had to pay bills. I had to grow up. I was parentified. I had to do things at a young age that, when we talk about dropout rates, like I look at all the different, all the different factors you're talking about. Like, it hit me home, because I did have siblings that dropped out, and they didn't follow through with their education, because they had some life, socioeconomic issues and things that, you know, we just talked about. It hit home. We got to do better with how we classify those students, to get them the proper resources. Because there are resources. There are immigration services and resources that help students achieve that. Because you got to look at it, some students come in here, I think, Member Peña mentioned, they're 17, they're freshmen. And then if they can't get their status before 18, or if they want to continue with school, when they, even if they continue to get the diploma, they can't access financial aid. They can't access the reality of a real, a vocational trade, or something that they're used to, where, you know, there's the reality. And that's something that folks need to talk about. I think there's a reality check that we need to have. And we need to assist our students with their why. You know, if they're dropping out, you know, if they're coming into our educational arena, well, we got to help them, right? This is public ad, we, we don't have a choice. We're going to come in, and we're going to do what, we have wonderful staff. The staff that have to go at these students and try to get these kids, who might have, they might be 17 in the ninth or 10th grade. Their levels, their reading levels could be in sixth or fifth grade, or illiterate. That's what we're up against. It's a reality. So, I think it's a very powerful tool to see the data that we see, because it allows us to, to discuss these challenges and to figure out solutions and, and systems, and, and put together the robust services that we have. I know when you look at 2014 to now, we've seen improvements. And I just think we live, you know, we claim to be such a progressive state like Massachusetts, but we still have these issues and challenges.
I want to highlight the, you know, the, the leveraging of our locus of control. I like what you, the Deputy Superintendent Cohen, you mentioned the, the three factors, with socioeconomic status, attendance, and motivation engagement. I'd like to know how we're capturing the, the data around, like socioeconomic status around poverty levels. Like, how, how do, how do we know, you know, how are we capturing, like you have a district-wide, you know, how are we getting that data to really identify our really low-income students? Like that, because that, that is going to, if you're growing up poor, I grew up very poor, you know, I was born poor. So, no one really, but poor people can hide it, you know? It's easy to not, you know, my father was proud, but we didn't have much. You can misclassify or not catch those kids. How are we getting these kids classified?
Well, so they are accountability classifications, right on the reporting. I think what you're speaking to, though, more is how are we capturing students who need more help and assistance than they might present?
Yes.
And so, that work is done through the guidance department and the social workers, and the teachers, frankly. I mean, teachers are the, teachers spend more time with students than anybody else in the system. They are, they are, you're, well, everybody's an advocate, but they, they just really know their stories through, the student stories through journaling, and everything else, just their relationship in the classroom. And so, it's really about, I think, creating the pathways that we were talking about before that allow any student, any place, to be able to access. Like, even right down to the uniforms for band and art, like, or band, rather. Not having to ask for something, just having something available is really the key. Because some people don't ask. They don't ask for what they want, right? There's a, there's a, many factors why they don't. But, so that our job is to make sure that everything is being offered.
That leads me to my next point around access. You know, we've made tremendous progress with the mental health supports. I want to highlight all the tremendous work that's been put into that, all the thought partners and partnerships that we've, the stakeholders, everyone that have, that put time into this, because I'm, five, six years ago, when I first saw this, this is half, is a quarter of this, of, of what I'm looking at. So, I'm very impressed. The RAM Center, are we looking to, like, are we looking at the other schools, like Lynn English?
Yes, yeah, that came up, yes, yeah.
Expand?
Yeah, that conversation is happening right now in that research team. Because remember, everybody on the research team comes from a school or a department. So, the, the ideas are spreading and percolating for some.
And I'll just add that the RAM Center, the idea of the RAM Center came from Classical, who found the PASS program. I don't know if you remember, we've talked in the past about the PASS program, which is at a YMCA in Beverly, where students who, you know, had a discipline issue were suspended for a day or two, say, for vaping. We would transport them, or they would get transported to the PASS program. Classical used that program a lot when we first started it. And it was, it was very impactful for many kids who had participated in it. It was Classical who said that, geez, we really should have our own. And so, that's when they asked to create the RAM Center, and they utilized their Mass Grad grant funding from the state to, to do it. And we've all been saying, yeah, we should have our own. But it's a matter of, you know, like, there's a budgetary cost to it. Yes, we have that grant money that is funding it, but we also have to think, you know, over time, the sustainability of it. But honestly, in, in my world of education, if we try something and it works, you make it sustain. Like, you, you don't pull something that doesn't work.
I appreciate that. And I also, the student voice and community service piece, that's a strong, that's wonderful. That's a, I'm not going to under-highlight that piece of it. I love it. Student voice is so important. I love how we've activated that throughout the years, my, my being able to see it unravel. The staying connected through engaging academic opportunities. I have a concern. I feel like we could do better. I feel like there's industry and partnerships out there ready for us. And I think Lynn is innovative. I think this school district has eligibility opportunities around funding that we're, we're starting to tap into. And I think we, we, we're, we're working on it. And I, I would like to see expanded STEM opportunities. Because when we talk about like staying connected with our kids, like, we got to get kids excited. Like, you got to get kids like that through, like a role, like that experience of coming to school. Like, I know that we have, like, we've had other programs that came out, you know, to get kids excited. And you just never know what is going to spark a young learner's interest, you know? It's, it's just, I, I just really can't emphasize us to make sure that we prioritize those academic opportunities, and to make, make it sure that we continue to explore aggressively and strategically how we can achieve. And I can see that you guys are already probably doing it. I can, by the looks of your face.
I'm not saying anything.
All you guys are smiling, so I, I'm going to hold off.
I think you all know, you chose who the next superintendent is, and so you know what she's thinking about in your conversations that you've had with her. I know we've had conversations, and I don't want to share anything that she has said, because it's hers to share. But I think our looking at each other and grinning speaks to that we know there is ideas out there.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for the presentation. Thanks to the whole LPS team for, for taking on this important issue. And then thank you to the school community members for, for sharing your experiences and your questions, your thoughts. Very, very helpful.
So, the next item is a field trip request. What's your recommendation?
I absolutely recommend.
Make a motion to allow the Marshall Middle School Grade A to go to Canterbury Lake Park, Salem, New Hampshire, on June 15, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Next is a request to accept a donation of $2,000 from Kings Lynn's President's Council, Inc., to Classical High School.
I recommend, would you approve?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Request to accept a donation of $100 from Lynn Teachers Union to Classical High School basketball in memory of Richard "Dick" Magg.
It's actually baseball. That's okay.
Yep.
And I absolutely recommend you approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
I had it up earlier.
Request to accept a donation of $2,000 from Promise the Children to LVTI Jason McCush to build social and emotional learning spaces for classrooms.
I highly recommend.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Next item is a vote to authorize myself to sign the ACE's memorandum of agreement between Lynn Community Health Center and the City of Lynn.
Yes, so in your packet, you should have this very colorful brochure. And so, on one side, on the front side, it talks about the mission of this program. The ACE team responds to families, and especially children, in the wake of violence, and connects them to appropriate trauma-informed supports and services in the community. The vision of this program, to build a strong and coordinated community partnership made up of close-knit, multidisciplinary agencies and the, and organizations focused on safety and healthy development of children and their families. This program is a collaboration between Lynn Public Schools, the Lynn Police Department, and Lynn Community Health Center. On the other side, you see the, the graphic that has the arrows that kind of go back and forth. That's the process. So, this team, this ACE team, what they do is, when the police get a call of a, you know, a problem in a family, or a situation where children are involved, once they've done their investigation and they're part of it, they then connect to the Lynn Police ACE Team Coordinator, who then gets all the information around the children. They then connect to Lynn Community Health Center and get any supports that the students would need through them, who then connect to, with the family for consent, and visits the home to discuss resources for them. That then connects to referrals placed to requested, needed services, and then to community agencies and work with family to provide appropriate services. This team also connects to Lynn Public Schools, so that if there is a, one, you know, our student who's impacted by a traumatic event, our clinicians then can support as well on our side. So, great program. I highly recommend that we support it, and would love to have the mayor sign it.
I'd like to move that, to authorize Mayor Nicholson to sign the ACE's MOA between Lynn Community Health Center and the City of Lynn.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one.
Member Peña, yeah, and then Member Capola.
I had a question. Would we be reporting to, like, immigration or anything like that?
No, no.
In these situations?
No.
That might be a concern with some, some people.
Yeah. Member Capola?
Okay. Actually, I think I answered my own question, but it's, the question that you had down here is, are you involved with DCF? And we're not involved with DCF, but you still have to with the mandated reporters.
And quite honestly, DCF can provide resources without it making the parent feel like they're the problem. It's, it's more about, this whole program is about helping to solve a problem.
There's also a step for consent in the process, so. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Next item is a request to cancel the 11th regular meeting on June 8th and hold a special meeting at a date that we need to select. So, we received a request to, to, to reschedule the June 8th meeting. I think part of this is, the next item as well, to want to set the public hearing for the budget at this meeting, I believe, is the goal, yeah. So, this, this meeting that we set up would be the goal for the public hearing. You need at least 30 days. And I think that we were potentially looking at June 22nd to do that.
For the public hearing?
Yes, and this, and this meeting, and this meeting. So, so as we've done in your spouse, you would do the public hearing, and then the meeting immediately following the public hearing.
Should we look on the 22nd?
Yeah. Does that work for people?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. In the form of a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the date of June, to move the June 8th meeting to the June 22nd. And we're going to discuss the budget following a public hearing for the budget, and then following the executive session for the budget.
We'll do a separate, the motion next will be to set down, so we'll do two motions, but yeah. Yep. Any second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. We'll have to, we'll send it out, yeah. Do, do we want to start this with the vote to set down the public hearing June 22nd? Or do you want to do that after you do the presentation?
Let's have to do, we can start it with that. I mean, we have to set a, a public hearing date, so.
We all have our calendars out right now.
Yeah, yeah. So, then, is there a motion to set the public hearing for June 22nd?
I'd, I'd like to move that we set the public hearing for June 22nd.
Second. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Okay, and now the budget overview.
Oh, we're up, okay. Okay, here we go. All right. First of all, I'm honored to present to you a proposal for fiscal year 2024. Again, you are just receiving the budget book today, and we have set a date now for a hearing. Tonight, I'd like to offer you an overview of the budget, both how it was built, what it's designed to do, and other important pieces at a high level. It is my recommendation that you listen tonight, ask clarifying questions that you might have, and then we engage. It is my recommendation that you listen tonight, ask clarifying questions that you might have, and then we engage in a deeper dive in the next three meetings on any aspect of the budget that you would like. The Lynn Public Schools will receive.
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
I did not receive this in my packet, nor did I receive the job description either. For some reason, nothing's in my packet. I have like the written copy of the last thing, not the other.
You're talking about the.
Have a copy of that, please.
You're talking about the the budget, the PowerPoint?
Correct. In the job description.
Okay, all right. Great, thank you.
Thank you. The Lynn Public Schools will receive an increase of little more than $27 million in Chapter 70 funds for fiscal year 24. The city's chief financial officer has indicated that the school department's budget allocation for fiscal year 24 will be $233 million. This represents a $21.4 million increase over the fiscal year 23 budget. The SOA funding was delayed, as we know, due to the pandemic, and as you're aware, state funding in fiscal year 24 represents the third of seven-year commitment of the SOA to address longstanding issues in school districts like Lynn Public Schools with an updated funding formula. I'd like to pause for a moment to acknowledge that this increase, it really is historic, like we we've never had money like this come forward that I remember in my 38 years. I think many of us are thrilled to see that the Student Opportunity Act is coming to fruition and that it means in terms, and what it means in terms of actual dollars we can leverage in support of student learning and growth. There are four more years of the Student Opportunity Act increases. Who knows what will happen in the future, but the first three years of funding create the possibility of transform, transformational change in our district. This is just a reminder slide for you as that this was shared with you early in the winter to outline the process for the development of the budget. I'm pleased to say that as interim superintendent this year, I have to say this was my the scariest part of the job, I think. But I'm happy to say that we were able to stick to the outline of the dates and the benchmarks and we were able to present this budget to you tonight in line with our expectations. I will reiterate the same message shared with you in the presentation of the budget development process, and that was to emphasize that our goal is always a process of collaborative, streamlined, and data and communication-rich. From the continued use of the budget reflection format to the analysis of stakeholder input data to touch points with building and department leaders, we really wanted to develop, wanted the development of this budget to reflect work done with and not to. That doesn't mean, however, that every request or wish was able to be accommodated. It does mean that there are plenty, there were and still continue to be plenty of conversation around ideas and the decisions. So in many ways, the development of the budget reflects a building block approach. Each year, we engage in the process starting from scratch. So first, you know, it involves community concerns, feedback with community concerns and needs. In this process, we have broad community feedback that we revisited and reviewed from previous feedback that we had received around the district strategic plan and the SOA plan. It also involves stakeholder input process for the Student Opportunity Act in 2019 and 2022, as well as school site councils. Every school, when they had their school site council, brought feedback from the parents that were there. We used all this information before we began to make sense of what we can include in the next fiscal year. Then we have to first deal with what we call the off-the-top budget items. I will say more about this in a later slide. And then from there, we keep close, we we keep close the important elements and objectives of our district strategy, student data, and the important pieces of plans that we have developed. Each plays a pivotal role in putting the pieces of the budget together. As we do each year, we engage principals and directors in a thorough process of analyzing need and turning this data into requests. And we spend quite a bit of time processing these requests, which was made easier by the new Excel form that we that was created last year by Josh Mower. And finally, our team need, our team's needs to carefully weigh each request to ensure that we are creating a budget that will make possible our attempt to achieve strategic objectives. And we collaborated, we had the collaboration of our new superintendent throughout this process. The off-the-top items, these are the things that are non-negotiable. These are what Kevin like right away, he says, we need to do this, we need to do this, we need to do this. This includes but is not limited to the negotiated salary increases and the step and lane increases, transportation, agreed-upon professional development days, and any necessary shifts from grants to appropriations. Those are off-the-top things that we have to do right right away. With that foundation, our focus then needs to shift to the intersection between the district strategic plan and the Student Opportunity Act plan. As a reminder, the district strategic plan was developed during the 2018-19 school year, and it ends this coming school year. We will enter into the development of a new district strategic plan with Dr. Alvarez this coming year. With our current strategic plan, we were also required to develop a plan for how the additional state funds would be spent. Giving full respect to that process, the same priorities that stakeholders identified during strategic plan development arose during input gathering on how the Student Opportunity Act funds should be allocated. The community was, you know, in line and in sync with, between our district strategic plan and our Student Opportunity Act plan. So, you know, everything really meshed well. As a result, our Student Opportunity Act plan needs to be anchored in research-based strategies identified by the Department of Education. The this graphic has been presented in the past, and on the left-hand side of this graphic, each one of the proposed actions represent an action for strategy derived from broad input from community and school-based stakeholders. Each aligns with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Research-Based Strategy and pushes us closer to achieving one of our strategic objectives outlined in our strategic plan. Over the next slides, I will share in more detail how additions, how the additions we are proposing for fiscal year 24 embrace the SOA plan and move us closer to meeting objectives in the district strategic plan. So in this slide, we outline our plan to increase personnel to support holistic student needs. We intend to do so by the addition of one additional social worker and two additional clinical supervisor, as well as funding for professional development. As you recall, oh, did I hit it again? Sorry, I hit too many. As you recall, last year, we, this this actual slide had many, many clinicians on it, right? We we were building our clinical model. So we already have staffing in place. This will help with, the one clinician addition is for the early childhood center and working with our early childhood students. And the two clinical supervisors is to bring into schools that have part-time or .5 clinical supervisors right now. Brickett is one of them. Aborn, I think, is one of them. The smaller schools have .5 clinical supervisors, and the principals have expressed that it's not enough. We need them there full-time. And so by adding these two, it's really adding, elevating from a .5 to a .1, so that schools will have full-time. And the professional development, our executive director of SEL has been working this year diligently on looking at trainings and professional development to provide to not only the clinicians, but also to our teachers. And so this funding is to help enhance our clinicians with the their learning and their professional development. With an existing evidence-based inclusion model in place, we continue to put our focus addressing longstanding service delivery shortcomings in special education based exclusively on undersaffing. We know that this is where the Student Opportunity Act money hurt us when we didn't have it the most, right? For years, LPS has struggled to meet the needs of students with disabilities. Our staff continue to go to incredible lengths to serve students. We have made some gains in caseloads with the addition of staff from last year. But and so with the addition of these additional positions in special education outlined in this slide, we will expect to take another step forward in the program and with service delivery. And so there's five additional inclusion teachers, six additional speech-language pathologist assistants, because we're still continuing to have difficulty finding pathologists, so the assistants are working very well and they're supervised by pathologists. And so we're going to add more assistance. The some special education evaluators, because more and more children, especially at the early childhood age, are coming with need needing to be tested, and so we're adding more testers there. A manager of family, community, and power of support, additional self-contained classrooms, so you can see there's additional programs that we're starting. And on the bottom, nope, on the next slide, sorry, I'm going to go to the next slide. I'm happy to say, so research shows that early education for our most underserved populations is imperative to their language acquisition and cognitive development. The focus of this part of the plan aligns with strategic objective number one outlined in the bottom right-hand corner of the slide. Given the ever-expanding programs happening at satellite sites across the city and our increasing percentage of multilingual learners in need of service, there needs to be additional space and resources to support this work in supporting our families with the need for preschool and to get our students in.
There's some misinformation on the packets. I got three, she's got three, you got four up there.
Oh, the updated one didn't.
Hold on, which one is?
It's four. We changed it to four. I apologize for that. We we had it as three, and then Dr. Alvarez and I had a conversation and we upped it to four. So it's four, four. Sorry about that. So the obviously, the effort here is to provide preschool opportunities for families, and I'm going to note, these will not be AM PM sessions. These will be full-day sessions, and that is intentional. Dr. Alvarez and I have had conversations around that the, you know, sometimes we have to have AM PM, but we're finding that our families, it's not accessible for them. They they can't work. And so these new ones, we want to make sure that we start building full-day programming so that it is more accessible for families. And just an additional note on that, our current dual-language pre-K at Harrington, which is currently AM PM, we are changing it to a full day. So this is great. As an early childhood educator in the past, I know all too well, I've seen the impact of early education, and this is a great opportunity for us to get the ball rolling on increasing pre-K. Okay. Improving the progress towards English proficiency among English learners is is as well as elevating the linguistic abilities of our students, families, and staff has been and continues to be a goal for our district. We continue to work on strengthening our understanding, skill set, and expertise in language acquisition and our ability to provide access to high-quality instruction to our multilingual learners. We continue to expand on our dual-language programming as well as further develop our staff's professional skill set as a big part of the success of these programs. Now, we actually staffing-wise, ESL teacher staffing, last year, if you recall, there was a high number, I think it was 25. And so we have those. Many of them did not get filled, some did, some didn't, so we still have those positions. We are working to fill those. This year, there is funding for dual-language fellows, and that's a program at Boston College. I looked at, I don't know why I just looked at you. And what that program is, it's to provide the opportunity for a paraprofessional who's interested in learning and becoming a potential dual-language teacher that we, the grant pays for the education for it. So the six TBD paraprofessionals is for that fellowship. And if we're lucky enough that there are paras who already work in dual-language programs, then they get to stay in the dual-language program and do it while they're in that program, while they're doing their job. But if it's a para who's not in a dual-language program who's interested, we would have to put that para into a dual-language program because the fellowship requires the direct work, and we would then have to hire a para to replace that person. So that's why there's six TBDs there, because it depends on what happens. And then the bilingual, biliterate stipends, as you recall in the negotiations, that is part of the contract, and we've had a number of people who took the stamp test and are getting that stipend, so we wanted to build that into the budget. Finally, in the realm of instruction, we added teachers in technology, art, music, and the and the broad category of intervention. Now, that was last year, if you recall. That was the, in order to provide the PLCs at the elementary level. The addition of these teachers allowed for students to engage with a deepening and deepen skill sets in specific areas determined by need. These additions also allowed elementary classroom teachers the opportunity for collaboration and development each week. In order to bring this work to the next level of impact, we need to support the schools with the focus of data. The foundation for the work has been set, but now we need to provide the consistent and calibrated tools to use in assessing our work and progress monitoring as we do the work. This aligns with our work with the Department of Education and the research-based practices that supports progress towards our strategic objective one in the bottom right-hand corner of the slide. So these are administrator-level positions, but with a focus on supporting the schools, supporting the the principals, providing the resources to help get the practices and systems and procedures and protocols across all schools so that there's consistency in it. Did that move? There we go. Last year, the fiscal year 23 budget included the addition of more than 200 positions, all of which were critical to supporting staff and students. In presenting the fiscal year 24 budget, you can see that there are additional direct-service positions being added where where needed. However, with the increase of new staff added to our district, we need to continue to build our leadership capacity to support these educators, help with project management, and to progress monitor all the work. The support and guidance that comes from these positions are critical to the overall function of our district. These additions create the capacity to allow for deeper support of instruction and more intentional progress monitoring throughout the progress of the work. This will allow for a quicker response to make adjustments where needed. As noted in the past, this is not only substantiated through our lived experiences, but also substantiated through the research as well. There are positions proposed in this budget that are designed specifically to create our capacity to support and monitor instruction and projects more efficiently. And so this slide. And so this slide, Kevin prepared this slide for us. And I know, you know, this chart represents the comparison of average funding expended for the state as well as like districts that are comparable to Lynn as of fiscal year '22. As you can see, Lynn is below the state average as well as below the overall average of administrators and instructional leadership positions within the district. As you may recall, these discrepancies have been shared in the past by previous administration and is being shared to bring to light the challenges we have been facing in our capacity to oversee, project manage, and supervise the number of staff grants and initiatives. Dr. Alvarez will now share her vision and rationale for the requested positions on the next slide.
So in supporting instruction and creating capacity as a part of the transition plan and preparation of the entry plan for the fall for school year '23-'24, a thorough review of all the areas of student needs and alignment with the LPS organizational structure is being currently conducted. I've shared that with some of you individually in parts to address some of the outstanding needs, actually that Molly highlighted earlier in the graduation report that she provided us with. And so there are several areas that we intend to expand on in school year '23-'24 because we have urgency and we cannot delay and spend an entire school year trying to prepare to implement something in '24-'25. And so the organizational structure chart will be shared at the June 2023 meeting. And this will create transparency of our system and structure to ensure that all stakeholders understand the function of each position at the district level. And so the first position on the slide is the deputy superintendent for secondary, six through 12. And I want to highlight some of the responsibilities that would fall under this third superintendent and how the realignment of the current superintendents would look with the addition of a third deputy. And so if we look at our total enrollment currently at 16,383, we've had two deputies since 2008, where the enrollment was closer to 13, a little high 12,000, low 13,000. And some of the areas that we really need to focus on for the upcoming year and going forward in development of strategic planning would look like the multi-tiered systems of support that need to be in place at K through 12. Looking at career and technical education, expanding the athletic programs such as a development of comprehensive student-athlete programs and Student Government Association student life. Looking at student attendance programs that include family engagement. We know that the need, and again, in the graduation report, it's a K-12 initiative, but really trying to engage students as part of that attendance plan to keep students involved in not only more electives, electives that are really innovative and that interest them, the athletic student programs that we intend to further develop. This deputy would also look, oversee fragile student populations, homeless and unaccompanied minors, including the operation of a center of students suspended more than 10 days, which we currently do not have. And we don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but we are thinking of spaces and possibly housing a center here at 100 Bennett Street to have a real impact and connect with them on a daily basis to make sure that they're coming, attending, and that they're connecting with adults that are overseeing their wellbeing. Then looking at increasing access to beyond high school experiences such as internships, executive internships, leadership experiences, work experiences through that. So not just work experience through vocational and tech, so that they also have opportunities to work with community partners in offices and understand that that could be their future versus they can pick any path they choose. And so looking at facilities improvements to improve innovative programming and new facility expansion, right? Because we will continue to build out a plan in phases of what needs to either, working with the school committee, the mayor, and ISD, all of those involved to decide whether it's renovations, whether it's a new building. And so we will definitely need a lot of input there. Safety-to-life issues, which we currently need to really have a focus on how do we deploy very quickly support from the administrative building here at the district to schools when things are happening at the school site to support our principals and ensure the safety of our students. The other would be the emergency procedures that go along with that. We definitely need to do an entire revision of our security and emergency procedures. Transportation for students. The welcome center so that it gives an opportunity, they're currently sitting under our executive director of social motion learning and deputy Kim Powers, but that would give them a direct accessibility to another deputy and allow deputy Powers to focus solely on curriculum and instruction. And then, of course, they would work collaboratively, but it would look more like curriculum instruction K-12, which focuses on core instruction, pedagogy, professional development. And then early childhood development, elementary school programs, pre-K programs through five, fifth grade, and then the secondary deputy as a six-through-12 support. I do want to point out that of all of our principals, when we look at the entire group, 12 of them are in their first one to three to five years. And so they need a lot of mentoring and a lot of individual support, which we can also do by having a structure in which we're seeking a deputy that has extensive secondary experience. The next position is right under the executive director of data assessment and accountability. That is the assistant director of data and assessment and accountability. This position would be the second of the three proposed at the meeting on March 30. We are in the process of completing the district application for the Harvard Strategic Data Project. We have had a meeting with them. They are excited to work with us. They have asked us to turn in our application. And I am really excited that Josh Mauro, who's sitting right over here, we approached him with the idea of actually participating as a fellow in this SDP program. So he took a little time to think about it and he accepted. So he will be applying as one of the fellows. And I'm pretty certain we'll be participating in two long years of strategic data project work to provide support to all of our principals, work with the fellow that we intend to screen and also bring in, which would be this assistant director of data assessment and accountability. The next position is the executive director of grants and innovation. You have a draft that was developed for what this looks like. And in constant revision, because we haven't finished really how, you know, this will be finalized, looking at maybe the title being inverted. So executive director of innovation and grants management. Does everyone have a copy? I have some extra copies. So this position would secure grant funding for innovative curriculum, STEM, STEAM, explore, performance-based frameworks, along with inquiry-based frameworks such as international baccalaureate programs and frameworks to bring global education into our classrooms. This would ensure that our students are using linguistic and multicultural experiences as contributions to our learning environments and would cement our efforts to voluntary desegregation. Our last version of the plan was created in 1987 and is in need of updating. So we are going to work on that and make certain that when we would apply for a grant, right, there would be an updated plan that is agreed to by the school committee, by the district, based on our vision and mission, and a letter from myself as a superintendent with the goals and plans that we would be seeking funding for. That's part of the requirements to seek federal funds. So when we look at the actual position, in thinking this through about, you know, what do the job goals look like? We really need to develop an innovation plan, right? Like, what are the phases of the innovation plan? What is the programming that we need in our schools to make sure that while we're securing this grant funding, we're actually looking at what grants we want to go after? The federal registry at the U.S. Department of Education has a significant amount of money in many, many categories, not just in programming, but in other areas. Childcare, students with disabilities, students with disabilities for specific programming that we could be writing the actual applications for. And that would be one of the primary goals, but really looking at what is the educational pedagogy that we want to offer our students in the schools and with an emphasis on 21st century skills. And I added them in here because if, as you look down those bullets, you will see that there's a broad range, right, of skills that students not only need, but that we can integrate as we submit for grant funding. So this would really look more like educational programming to, you know, go hand-in-hand with our core. It doesn't replace core. These are electives and those pathways to engage our students, for them to be excited to come to school, to improve our student attendance, to decrease our disciplinary actions. You know, there's nothing more effective than an engaging instructional environment to reduce all of the, you know, and mitigate the challenges that we're currently facing and also to increase the graduation rate. Even looking at bilingual courses and certain subjects so that we engage our MLE or Ls and mitigate that feeling of lost, you know, hopelessness that I may be 17 and how am I going to get to graduation? We're also looking at, you know, what that scheduling looks like. And as Molly pointed out, like age placing and working backwards, recovering credits that they need. But certainly engaging them in courses that are innovative as electives versus more remediation will make a significant difference in what our student achievement looks like within a year, two years, three years. So this transformational work would really promote programmatic equity. We'd focus on, again, elementary, middle, high, and making connections to real-life experiences. Looking at pedagogy like project-based learning, inquiry methods. And this position in particular would not only seek grant funding, but also seek the support of partners, philanthropists, to help plan, organize, oversee, and promote initiatives, right, related to our educational programming. Qualifications are all there. We're really looking for someone who has extensive experience in education, minimally 15 years of professional experience at the school and district leadership in an urban and culturally rich environment, eight to 10 years of professional experience in educational administration, equivalent combination of training and experience that provides required knowledge, skills, abilities. And this position would report directly to me as a superintendent so that we could effectively work together. I have extensive experience doing this work and bringing programs in to change, to the change theory work that we need to focus on as we do our strategic plan as well. So this was one of, you know, initially it was more like, let's focus on core. But if we only focus on core, we're going to continue to lose a significant number of students over time. And so we also, this will also bring back some of the students that we've lost to other schools, which I will not name. Also out-of-district placements, right? And so I think, you know, when we have programs that have high-tech environments for students with disabilities, we may change the environment completely for a student in terms of sensory, you know, skills, auditory skills. How do we increase even, and there are some software and technology now also for speech therapy that is very high-tech, but we need the environments, we need the labs, we need iPads, we need printers, we need, you know, mo-cap, motion capture screens, right? Where students do this and you see the movement on the screen. And then, you know, you talk about like what's happening with the chemicals. And so there's a way to integrate math, science, social studies, ELA, at the same time. So this is, I think this is one of the pivotal, this is one of the positions that's going to make a tremendous difference in terms of how we educate our students and retain them in school. Are there any questions I can answer?
Yeah, and I would just, as, is that the end of the slides?
No.
No, okay.
Well, for this slide, yes.
Yeah, okay.
The other ones are non-instructional administrative positions.
Got it.
I'm almost done.
Yeah.
Promise. Okay.
Thank you.
You skipped one.
Did I?
Yeah.
So it.
No.
Well, you, there you have assistant compliance officer. You had him on another slide as well.
I don't know what happened there.
You have human resource manager and human resource systems coordinator, so.
Sorry, I must have pulled, yeah, I must have pulled up the wrong one. It's, there's one slide that was added and it has, you have it in your packet.
Yeah, we have it in our packet.
I pulled up the wrong one here, but you have it in your packet.
Yeah.
It has the assistant compliance officer, the human resource manager, the human resource systems coordinator. The two human resource positions were recommended by the consultant that we brought in when the executive director of human resources was hired. We're trying to professionalize that department, right? And they absolutely need that work. And the compliance officer, the work in that office has increased tremendously. Just Title IX alone, you know, the support he gives in discipline situations, Title IX, support to special ed, support for public records. There's just an enormous amount of work and when he's, and he's doing trainings. And so when Attorney Gallo is working on a training, there could be calls coming in that need to be addressed and there's no one really to help support that. And so this is really in an effort for capacity to make sure that we are in compliance to all the things that we need to be. Okay. So what we've presented in this presentation are a number of additions or increases that reflect commitment to and alignment with the Student Opportunity Act. The increase is significant. There's a lot of good that will be done in our district with this proposal. This presentation highlights what this budget does for students first and foremost. It continues to increase access. It continues to increase access to mental health supports and allows us to fully implement, refine, and calibrate practices within our clinical model. It will also allow us to be able to provide more equitable access to rigorous learning for our students with disabilities and English learners. Where possible, we are able to reduce class sizes and maintain them at minimum. And this budget will also allow us to expand on two main programs that Lynn Public Schools are committed to, actually, three: dual language, early college, and the addition of preschool seats. Across the district, there will be additions to these programs through expansion, training, and programming. Lynn Public Schools are trailblazers in our dual language and our early college programs, and these additions will allow us to be the model to follow in these areas of work. For staff, similar to the benefits for students, I want, I also want to be clear about what this does for our professional community, who continues to work so hard at a time in education that is challenging. First, with the addition of staff over last year and the additions being proposed this year, we will be able to continue addressing reduced caseloads and increased supports in special education and with mental health. We're continuing the opportunity at the elementary and secondary level for professional collaboration each week and additional opportunities for all staff for professional learning with the continuation of full-day professional development in 2023-24. The added administrative positions allows us to provide the training and supports that the schools so desperately need around monitoring our work and the progress of our students, building upon the foundation that we began building this year with ILT, PLT, and data champions. These positions will only strengthen our work going forward. And I'm going to end with this beautiful picture of this flower. I conclude my presentation with a visual representation to reflect my thinking on the budget proposal process. This flower represents the beauty and wonder of one element in nature. Our world is so much more expansive than that one element. There are so many other elements that need to be worked through, developed, monitored. This takes many hands and minds to do. If we think of this flower as an idea, project, our students or staff members, each being one flower in a much bigger expansive world of needs, decisions, and components of education that need support, each petal representing individual needs or talents that we as an educational community needs to support and cultivate to help the skills grow in their fullest potential. In order to do this, we need to build our capacity to support our staff and students and strengthen the unique needs each one has. I'm excited about what this budget proposal can do for our students, staff, and district next year and beyond. It reflects collaboration of our team, significant movement forward, and honors the input of our community. We have been on a very different kind of journey this year, all the while strengthening our foundation and moving forward in our learning and supports to each other. While it has been a challenging and uncertain, we have moved forward. No one can say for certain what the road ahead looks like. You can't always see what's on the other side of the mountain. But there is nothing stopping us from moving forward on our path to support each other as one small element in a much bigger world. With our new superintendent and the new district strategic planning process coming, I remain excited about the next steps in our district and students' progress and success. As I said at the beginning of the presentation, you're getting this information for the first time tonight. We'll continue these discussions. I recommend that you take all the information from the slides, the budget narrative, and your budget books that you've received. Questions can be sent in advance. We will formulate answers for you and if you have any clarifying questions for tonight. I don't have a superintendent report because you got a lot of information tonight.
Yeah, I'll keep it brief. I noticed the time. I just want to say thank you for the presentation of the plan and I'm super excited. You know, I love the new position of the grant writer there that's, you know, to bring different, you know, to engage our students, you know? And I'm excited about the expanding of the student-athlete program. I have a son who's a sophomore. He's one of the captains of the varsity football team, classical, and I'm super excited to see how we can develop our student-athletes. And I'm going to give you a warning, you can come back to LPS before, no, just kidding.
We're going to have a huge signing day for athletes next year.
I'm super excited about what the future looks like, you know, with the expansion of the deputy, you know, getting a new deputy that'll help, really help, you know, we're really, and that person's going to report to you directly, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and that's exciting. And they're going to add transportation under that person?
Yes.
Yeah, when we lost Dave, I was just wondering, are we going to add any more help in that department? Because I remember when we lost Dave, you know, it was struggling a little bit and they could use some help there.
Yep, we actually added a second, what do we call it?
LSA.
Yeah, it's LSAA, manager of transportation. We added another position in there. It's not a clerical position.
You know, I know the directors there have been doing a great job with what they have and...
And that second person, we're going to be intentional about the scheduling, like that if someone's working earlier, the other person is working later? So that they're not all working, you know what I mean?
They overlap. Yeah, yeah. And I'm just, I'm excited, you know, what's going to happen in LPS in the future. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. More to come. Thank you. Is there any further business? Oh, ratification. Member Dugan, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, that's okay.
The superintendent report threw me off. Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right.
I feel the same way, Mayor, Mr. Mayor. But we do have a couple more things, a couple more things. I'll be quick. So, in terms of letter H, eradication of votes, there were none taken on April 4th, so we have nothing to do there. But tonight, we did have a motion to adopt GCF to replace KCBA. The adoption of GCF would include a fourth point that reads, "All qualified LPS employees will be included in the referrals made to the principals, directors, and/or screening committee for an interview."
So, will the committee?
We moved it to the full committee.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
That concludes the...
I believe I'm done.
Yes.
Member Dugan, there was a vote to move forward the changes to H on April 4th.
We weren't sure if there was a vote to move that out.
There was a vote for that? We weren't sure if...
Okay, then we can do it.
Okay, so we'll just go back to that. Okay. All right, so the ratification, there were some votes to ratify then on April 4th. We did make some changes to section H, so that was moved to the full committee, so yeah, we need a motion to accept that.
So, I'd like to move that we accept the changes to section H as noted in the packet materials. Well, I moved it, you'd have to second.
Any second? Motion, man, seconded. Discussion, roll call.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I may be a grandmother tomorrow.